Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Eustace City Hall. It is Thursday, October 1st, 2020. It is 6:05 PM. This is a regular city commission meeting of the Eustace City Commission. At this time, we're going to have our invocation. I've asked Brian Broomfield to come and lead us for that. And then our pledge of allegiance will be led by Karen LaHooth Smith, Commissioner. If you would like to join us, please stand.
Thank you, Brian.
That is great. Almighty and eternal God, we come right now just to ask for your blessings as we prepare ourselves to enter into this meeting of the city commission. And we ask that you bless the decisions that are made here tonight and in future meetings. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. You may be seated.
I'm going to go ahead and officially call our meeting into order. Mary, is there a quorum present and proper notice been given?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. And I was going to ask our city manager if there is an agenda update, but I do not see the city manager, so do you know if anything...
I do not believe there is an agenda.
Thank you so much. Commissioners before us, we have the minutes of September the 17th, 2020, regular city commission meeting. What's the will of our commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the minutes of September 17th, 2020.
Thank you so much.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHooth Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Next, we're coming down to audience to be heard. This section is for people that are going to speak on something other than what's on the agenda tonight. We will get to the point where most of you are here for in just a little bit. But at this time, as soon as Mr. Nybert gets to the table, he'll can let me know if there's anybody that spilled out a card to speak on something else. Okay. That's why, are you going to speak on the annexation stuff or something else?
No.
What's that?
Something else.
Come on up, Kathy. We'll go ahead and start with you then, okay? You just give your name, please. Thank you, ma'am. It's just for the record. I'm sorry.
Kathy Gonzalez, Estes Road. I live on Blue Lake. I just want to let you know that Blue Lake is flooding again. So I know y'all were patting on yourselves on the back, working with the county and the city, but it's flooding. So it's coming up, all this rain we've had. Like I've said before, you need to get a new assessment of that lake and what's going on. There is no output of that water. It's a bowl. It's sitting there and it's coming up. The trees are now coming up. The flooded house sold again, so hopefully they'll watch it. Another thing I just want to say is what happened to us on Blue Lake and Blue Lake Estates came in, please don't make that the same mistake when you start moving into these rural areas. It needs to be thoughtful thinking and think about the people that around you because I'm in, we're enclosed out, Ryman and Estes Road. We're getting development all around us. We've lost our rural setting. And just think about it before you do it.
Thank you, ma'am. Ron, was there anybody else? Anybody else that would like to speak on something that's not on the agenda this evening? All right, not singing, we're going to close that portion of our meeting this evening. Commissioners, before us, we have seven items on the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody wants pulled for discussion? Not hearing any, I'm going to ask the will of our commission on our consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of the seven items listed on the consent agenda.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHooth Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Aliberty?
Aye.
Commissioner Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. We have Resolution 2071, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Eustace, Florida, authorizing the vacation and abandonment of Marsh Street as recorded in the Irwin subdivision replat, plat book 10, page 33, lying south of Orange Avenue, north of Greenwood Cemetery, and west of 1804 Orange Avenue, as more particularly described herein in accordance with ordinance number 1938. Lori Barnes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Development Services Director, presenting a request to vacate a right-of-way known as Marsh Street. Marsh Street is shown as a 25-foot-wide right-of-way on the Irwin subdivision replat recorded in 1929. The roadway was never improved and exists in its natural state currently. That roadway does lie west of 1804 Orange Avenue and north of the Greenwood Cemetery. This is the Irwin subdivision plat view from 1929. And the aerial map showing the Marsh Street right-of-way outlined in blue, again, lying west of 1804 Orange Avenue and north of the Greenwood Cemetery, just south of Orange Avenue. Chapter 82 of the Eustace Code of Ordinances addresses vacation of right-of-way and grants the city commission legislative authority to vacate and abandon a public right-of-way, either at the request of the city manager or designee if the right-of-way is deemed to no longer be in the public interest, or by at least two-thirds of all owners of budding the portion of the public right-of-way proposed to be vacated. In this case, we did receive an application from the three property owners bordering Marsh Street, both on 1804 Orange Avenue and the two homes on Oak Court. The applicant's justification includes statements regarding the non-use of the property for 86 years and the fact that the road was never improved to provide access to the cemetery. The applicant wishes to utilize the land to upgrade the property and to provide additional privacy and security. The owner of 1804 was the property owner that initiated the request with cooperation from the neighbors. They did provide the city with a copy of a plan that shows a proposed parking area improvement that would utilize the Marsh Street right-of-way as access. Section 82-158 includes criteria for a right-of-way vacation and calls for the city commission to consider all of these factors. Is there a public benefit to the right-of-way? In this case, there is. Is vacating the right-of-way consistent with the comprehensive plan? In this case, it is not. There is legal access to all the properties bordering. Public safety is not a concern. Pedestrian safety is not a concern. Municipal services and relocation or location of utilities is a concern. And there is no concern regarding the effect on the design and character of the area. Regarding the public benefit, this property could be utilized for a reclaimed waterline expansion project. The aerial map on the screen shows the 14-inch reclaimed transmission line to the east on the north side of Orange Avenue. This reclaimed transmission line could be extended to serve the eastern area of the city and the Hazelton area and the cemetery area by two routes. One route would be Orange Avenue and Hazelton. The alternative route would be through the Marsh Street right-of-way and the Greenwood Cemetery. That is the preferred route. Because there is a public benefit and the comprehensive plan calls for predictable, cost-effective development decisions, those two factors are not met with this right-of-way vacation. Again, the municipal service use of the property and the opportunity to locate utilities in this Marsh Street right-of-way show that the right-of-way vacation request doesn't meet the criteria in the code. Some additional information regarding the utility expansion proposed, the differential cost between running the reclaimed waterlines down Orange Avenue and Hazelton versus the cemetery is over $275,000. And this is because Orange Avenue has a number of utilities in the right-of-way. There will be utility conflicts to address. There will be increased maintenance of traffic needs. Hazelton Road and Orange Avenue is a constrained intersection that will complicate construction. And furthermore, Hazelton Road is built with a concrete base. It cannot be cut without being completely replaced. Public works reviewed and provided the cost estimate on the screen and also in your staff reports. Rick Girock is here in the building tonight if you have additional questions or need more specific information on the reclaimed water expansion proposed. In order to vacate any right-of-way, the city commission must determine that the right-of-way no longer serves a public purpose or that vacation of the right-of-way is in the public interest. In this case, Marsh Street still does have a public purpose to serve and vacation is not in the public interest. The city would lose the opportunity for an alternate utility expansion route. A point of information, if the commission does decide to approve the right-of-way vacation, the applicant has indicated a desire for the right-of-way. The owner of 1804 East Orange has indicated a desire for the entire right-of-way to be conveyed to their property and has permission from the adjacent property owners. However, if the commission does approve the vacation, chapter 177 of the Florida statutes calls for half of the property to go to one adjacent property owner, or two in this case, and the other half to the other adjacent owner. So if the commission does approve the right-of-way vacation, Ms. Laboue, the owner of 1804, would need to work with her neighbors to have their interest in the right-of-way conveyed to her. The city did advertise this vacation request in the newspaper and provided notices to property owners within 500 feet. Other than the applicant, we have not received any additional contact or inquiries regarding this right-of-way vacation request. Staff does recommend denial. The Marsh Street right-of-way still does have a public purpose to serve and it would eliminate an alternative utility expansion route, resulting in increased construction costs to the city's taxpayers. Also, there is an alternative for Ms. Laboue in regard to the improvements she desires to make on the property. The public works director and I have discussed the issuance of a right-of-way utilization permit, which would grant permission to use the property for a driveway access in a portion of her parking area. However, the city would retain ownership. And should the city need to go onto the property and do work on the property in the future for utility expansion projects, we are not necessarily required to replace the improvements under the right-of-way utilization permit. Ms. Laboue is here tonight. I'm sure she'd like to speak to the commission on her own behalf. And again, Rick Girock is here if you have any detailed questions about the utility expansion proposed.
Thank you, Lori. Commissioners, any question of Lori?
Do we have a projected date for the expansion?
Rick, come on up. That's fine.
I have a question. What does it mean, public purpose to serve?
The, the, the public purpose would be, the, or the public use is the reclaim, the corridor for the reclaim and the easement. Our standard for utility easements is 20-foot-wide easement. Part to get into the reuse is, as part of our CUP, our consumptive use permit, we have the St. John's that allows us to take water out of the aquifer to make the potable water. We also have to meet a requirement of putting on reclaim. It's called alternate water use study. We've had areas identified that were in our game plans. When we started the Lakeview job, I reached out to St. John's at that point because some of the stuff up at Grand Island at that point didn't make sense. We weren't seeing the growth. So I asked them, can we look rather than that? Can we look at bringing the south side and bringing the distribution or transmission system out to the south side of Orange Avenue? That probably happened, I'd say, 2017. At that point, we look at the different construction methods. I had a contractor help me with the estimate and also an engineer. And this is, the work I used to do is heavy utility. By running in through the cemetery, it's an area, we don't have graves that we have to disturb. There is a maintenance road. Some of it's improved, but it's improved, some of it's just dirt. Some of it's improved, some of it with asphalt. So the cost to rebuild that, we're just talking about rebuilding a 12-foot-wide asphalt lane. And the construction method is, it's, you're like putting pipe in a pasture. I mean, it's, it's just easy to do. We can work around, keep the cemetery operational. We can work around it. To go and not use this, we'd have to extend down Orange Avenue. It's a very tight corridor in the right-of-way. So we've got to use what we call trench box. Also, additional problem with trench box, you have ever had utilities. So when you're picking the box up with the excavator, you have to watch how you pick it up with, so you don't get into the power lines. We would not go out into Orange Road or Orange Avenue. I don't think Lake County would let us. That is their road. We stay in the right-of-way. It's tight. So the cost of construction is much slower, much more expensive. When we get down to Hazelton, it's the concrete base and that road section has to come out. You know, this gives us a point that we can bypass roughly 2,000 feet, almost of, it's 1,900 feet, of hard construction to make it much easier construction. And that's where the cost difference of this is. And that's where the public benefit is, we see it as. Can I put the reclaim in? Yeah, we can do it. But the cost to go down Orange Avenue and Hazelton is 475,000 versus just under 200,000 by going through the cemetery. That's a small piece of the expansion project. It is not in our five-year plan right now. Currently, we're meeting, I'm trying to push it as much as I can with St. John's. They've been receptive to us. If we can't show some type of, of economic benefit as well, they don't push as hard as long as we're, we're bringing things online. So the 11 Oaks property is going to be on reclaim. We did a directional drill to supply them. And we also just did a directional drill under Hickstitch to serve the area if there's expansion up by a contractor. So we're meeting the requirements as we stand now, but we have to bring future areas on as well. And this is one that's earmarked for us to do. I don't have a hard deadline of when because I'm trying to keep that expenditure down, you know, as long as I can. But St. John's could force us to do it. And by the time we need to re, renew our CUP, if we have to open it up for any reason, they're probably going to be looking at it then and want a renewed alternate water use study. So try to not get too much detail, and I know I did, but...
Thank you, Rick.
Would a compromise not be that if she were allowed to use it, as she suggested as one alternative, might a compromise be that if you do have to take up whatever she puts down or whatever happens there, that you can fix it? An agreement on that?
Yeah, I can tell you if, if I am still here when it happens, I'm going to write the bid package. And the way I, I write bid packages is now is to replace what's there. You replace in kind. The, the right-of-way permit itself serves, it's just a one-page permit. It serves a lot of different purposes. And it also is a mechanism for people that want to work in the right-of-ways where we know we have utilities. We know we're going to be in there. There's verbiage in that permit that states we're not responsible for improvements that are made in the right-of-way. If, in this case, if I'm there letting the package, I'm letting the package to replace what's there. And that would be the design package. If I'm not here, my successor, you would have the right-of-way permit and they could do what they want. I doubt anybody would. You know, we're going to get through and put back what's there.
Could we put a note on that specific right-of-way permit as part of granting a permit that the city agrees to replace certain improvements, provided that so long as their only payment that we could put it as a note on that actual permit and then any successors would see that in the right-of-way agreement?
I wouldn't say why we couldn't.
Say that one more time, Ron. I didn't quite hear.
Rather than using a blanket language that says we're not responsible, I guess if the commission were to deny the request, you could make a condition of your denial of the right-of-way use permit include language that says that the city of Eustace will agree to replace the existing pavement tried to, maybe improvements on the right-of-way as part of the permit. That way, any successors that review that permit will know where that came in.
Yeah, I think it makes sense because obviously the city, whoever sits up here would say, well, Rick, why don't you pay the new landowners the $20,000 to make that improvement rather than go to Hazelton and cost you $200,000? I don't think that's our argument here.
Right.
So I mean, that's why, I, I agree with you, Vice Mayor. I think it makes sense to us to be able to allow this to go on. It's been 91 years and I, I don't use reclaimed water. I don't think I'll ever have it. It's too far to get it and I live on East Key. So I saw where you coming through, but where would that go?
Right. And that's the thing. Right now, we have one point of transmission and that is what feeds the cemetery at the point that because the distribution system drops down to four-inch, so it can't be used as a transmission. This would solely be transmission main. And from there, we would bring it out.
See, that's, that's why...
It's expensive. I mean, it, to make that change is expensive. And that's how we were able to keep communication with St. John's and push it as much as we can and bring the new...
Yeah, I think we have to keep our communications with our citizens, too. If it's been like that for 91 years, I think it's about time that we look at all the alternatives. And if there's a good alternative, I did meet, meet with Ms. Laboue also yesterday, I think it was, and toured the site and, and I thought it was minimal. And, and I look at it as public safety. I tried to get out of that area and she has a business. It's going to be hard for people to get in and out. You have to back out of there now. And I think it's another commercial, commercial business for us on Orange Avenue. I think it's a great idea, so...
Yeah, I think we could make that note. And where this is a little bit different than the majority of the right-of-ways that we're dealing with, the majority of the right-of-ways are between the residents and the street as a side. So I think if it was ever questioned, we could, you know, we could explain how this is different on the side.
I think that's stipulated, you know? Any other questions of Rick or Lori? All right. Ms. Laboue, did you want to speak to this? Since you're the applicant, we'll let you go next and then we'll... And before she gets started, I do want to remind everyone that I did meet with her when this first came up, so...
Well, first of all, I want to thank you all, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Holland, as well as commissioners, for your public service. I understand you all have hard decisions to make and I understand that because I too am a public servant, serving as a vice chair for the Florida A&amp;M University Foundation and as a board member for the local YMCA. The right-of-way in question was supposed to be a street that was never developed. The previous owner, and actually the lady across the street, used to use it as a walkway and exercise down that street. However, it was actually divided by the city when they fenced in the cemetery. When they fenced in the cemetery, on the cemetery side, that area was maintained by the city. However, on the other side, there was no maintenance. It was only the owners of 1804 East Orange Avenue. And that's important because that's been a very, very long time. The original plat listed is 1925. So we're looking at about 95 years. From the beginning, when we acquired that property about 15 months ago, as I had mentioned before, we went in and cleaned up a lot of things to make it look nice and to make it look appropriate. In good faith, I came to the city when I found out that there was a variance there because we did not know about that. And then I kind of went back and forth between the city and the county until I finally said, you know, let me move forward. I talked to the neighbors and all of the neighbors agreed. We want to make sure that that's taken care of, closed in, so it's safe for us and we can make, actually make it look nice. Now, when you think about 1925, a lot of things have happened. We've had the Great Depression, prohibition, Pearl Harbor, and even COVID-19. And that piece of parcel remains the same with nothing being done as a street. And we were actually surprised and chuffed when we learned that it was a street because there's no sign or anything there. Growing up, my mom always told me, Lisa, if you haven't used it in two years, you don't need it. You need to get rid of it. And I thought about that because, you know, I talked to my mom and everything. She was, I told her, I thought it was one year. She said, no, I told you two years. And when I thought about it, the city actually used to have, it was the mow-to-own program where you mowed it, you maintained it, you took care of the trees for two years, and after two years, you owned it. Well, guess what? It's been 95 years. So two years you own it, 95 you don't. That I don't understand. So today, I'm here to ask you to make a decision and to vacate that variance that there, that's there. I would also like to make a correction. In the city report, it stated that no one else besides the neighboring residents had inquired about this. Actually, Linda, the realtor with Houses With Spouses, she's the actual one who worked with myself and the owner, Ms. Black, regarding the acquisition of that property. She actually paid a visit to the city personally and met with Mr. Bertrand and asked a lot of questions as far as what was going on. So I just do want to put that out there because she did, does agree with us regarding the vacation of that particular property. So please vote to vacate. Thank you.
I have a card from a David Higgins.
Mr. Higgins?
Good evening. I am the owner resident at 21 Oak Court. The easement or road in question, in fact, I only knew it was called Marsh Road as about a week ago. And I've been here 10 years on that property. So I'm in favor of allowing Ms. Laboue to have the property given back to that parcel of land as it was dedicated so many years ago and not being used. It's, I have no interest in the property itself for my personal annexation or attachment to my own property. And I have a letter from the neighbor, Ms. Carol Bonnema at 11 Oak Court. She was not able to be here tonight. She asked me to read it to you, but I can give you a copy if you'd rather. And says, it's in favor of, same as me, to surrender the property. I did have a couple interesting questions about, from the city's testimony or presentation stating that Hazelton is the only other viable option to go through for a possible three-to-five-year water distribution center. And the cemetery already has access on Orange Avenue. Double-sided gate that has a maintenance access from 441, excuse me, from Orange Avenue. So I'm nervous. Haven't done this in a while. But Orange Avenue, they already have access. The city owns the cemetery and maintains it and they already have an agreement with the cemetery to run probably 95% of this transmission line through the cemetery property already. Why would they need to use Marsh Road when they can already use the access that's already on Orange Avenue? on Orange Avenue as an entry point for the distribution coming from the east? I guess that's about all I have.
Thank you. Rick, do you want to try to answer that question, sir?
Yeah, the entrance, the gated entrance there farther east, it comes up to Orange Avenue, that is where we would do the point of connection. That's where we have a 14-inch line that comes through. Going to the south from there through the cemetery, that's where the distribution system's installed. So, again, we've got an area, we've got the plots laid out. There is an access right, and that's where the distribution system runs or where it starts.
Anything else, Mr. Nybert?
That's all the cards.
Mr. Attorney, I'm going to give it back to you. I'm sorry I took it.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I also spoke with Ms. Bonnema, too, so thank you.
Well, I spoke with Ms. Laboue on the phone, and my question was, when she went to go get a permit basically to put in a driveway, is that what, that was pavement? Or she had pavement? You didn't have enough room. Is that what it was? You didn't have enough room to put the driveway in. So, is there any other way you can configure the driveway or go a different way?
What happened was is that when the contractor started the process, we didn't realize that that was considered a street. And that's when he said, "We're not going to be able to do it this way because of that little area." So, you know, what we were trying to do is instead of having mulch or, you know, gravel and all of that kind of stuff, which we felt was not as professional, we wanted to lay the cement. And that's, I mean, we looked several different ways because I had several contractors to come out. And the contractor that actually, Ms. Barnes, put the configuration up, that's what he came up with in order for us to facilitate the process.
So, it wasn't, it wasn't...
It needs the whole space to be able to turn around, I believe.
Oh, so it's a turnaround?
Because of the city, the city requirements. He said the city requires so many things, so in order for that to be done, that whole space was needed.
Well, you would think we could look at some kind of variance for that. We kind of give variances for other things.
I don't think it's a regulatory issue. It's more of the practical maneuvering space.
For vehicles.
Ma'am?
For vehicles to park.
So, you don't back out on...
Right. What happened?
It's not really a regulatory issue. It's more of the practical maneuvering of vehicles.
There are no further questions. Would any members of the public like to speak on Resolution 2071? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Back to you, Mayor.
All right. Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution 20-71. If we approve this as written, we are going to vacate this land and turn it over to Ms. Laboue. You've heard the city's recommendation for denial of this. We could bring it back and do the variance that Lori talked about and Rick talked about. So, it's what's the will of our commission on Resolution 20-71?
My motion, did we approve the vacation? It's so strange to hear that. Vacation of an improvement of...
I'll second it.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, yes. I think we need to go with the, what was the other thing?
The right-of-way use permit.
Yeah, the right-of-way use permit because you're still talking about a $200,000 cost to the taxpayer. And by the time it's done, you know, CUPs come up for renewal, and we have to show that we are doing our best to have reclaimed water. It's all part of it anymore. It's a regulatory factor. And if that's the way we need to go in there, then we need to have, we need to be able to do that. That's my thought.
Rick?
I don't think it was $200,000. $200,000 go on Hazleton Street.
Yes, so it would save $200,000.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It doesn't make sense for us at that point. You're right. If we had access to that right-of-way, if that ever happened, then it would cost us...
We're giving up access if we turn this property over.
Yeah, and I think even in that case, I'm still okay because I think it's been so many years. And I don't see reclaimed water being a major issue for the City of Eustis, especially where we're talking about distribution. I think I'm the only one with a sprinkler system on East Key. I don't know who's going to use reclaimed water for that kind of expense. I just don't see that neighborhood looking, it's not new development yourself. I'm not sure where the reclaimed water would be used. And can you imagine trying to build that reclaimed water into that neighborhood? It's all restructured. It's all, you know, it's not new residences. They're all old structures. I can't imagine trying to build a home water line to my house to get reclaimed water. I guess that's what I'm, I don't, I think that's what it's for, right?
Well, so, but the variance they were talking about would be the right-of-way, the right-of-way, and it would include, it would include an estimated amount that would cover if you had to go through and tear it up, which what you had said is saving us money on that end because we can use that as a thoroughfare. So, you know, that's, if you told me, I mean, that's a sure thing. If you told me out, you were going to take care of me, I'd take you at your word, so...
I was just puzzled. Why has it become so urgent after 96 years?
Because we didn't have reclaimed water back then.
We had it for a long time.
This is something that we are required to show that we're providing reclaimed water.
As of when?
Probably the last, I'll see, I started...
In the last 12 years.
I was going to say between the last 15, 12 years. I used to go to the water, we used to have a water committee that met, and it's part of our CUP process.
This is a commercial property now, though. When you purchased it, was it a commercial property or was it a home?
It's currently, it's currently a home. It's still a home.
It's still a home.
The property would require an administrative site plan review and a change in use review so to convert it to commercial use. So, there's significant, there's significant amount of review and work to be done before that property can be used for a commercial purpose.
Okay.
Can I add that I did speak to the city?
Sorry.
They can't catch you on the mic back there. I would just like to add that before we started this process, I actually came into the city and spoke to the city as far as the process for transitioning. So, we did the homework, and actually, the ADA that they set was required was the first thing that we actually started working on. So, in the process of working on that, if you go look, you can see grass is now growing because when we started that walkway and the ADA, we shut everything down. But then also, I learned later that I really didn't have to put the ADA in. But again, I went based on what the city told me. And to be honest with you, it would be a challenge to invest in this area and do all of the improvements and with the concern of someone coming back in and then pulling all of that back up. So, that would be a major concern, and that's why we were asking for a vacation. And also, the neighbor who wrote the letter, hers was actually very detailed, and she had a lot of questions because she's concerned about what also could go in her backyard.
Keep in mind, we have committed this evening to, as part of a right-of-way use permit, to amend that permit to guarantee that we would replace those improvements that would be made. So, we've made that commitment as part of that.
Yeah, that's...
Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay. Before us, we have Resolution 20-71 that vacates this property, okay? We've got a first, we have a second, we've had discussion. Roll call, Mary.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Nay.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Nay.
Vice Mayor Lee?
I don't know. I'm still torn between the two. Probably I would say nay.
Mayor Holland?
Nay. I would like to, Lisa, I want your business here. I would like you to work with staff and see if we can bring back the variance and make it work with us working it through, okay? I like your spirit. I like what you can bring to the city. So, if you would, work with Lori and see if we can bring it back to work that out. Okay? Thank you.
Also, to put into that, what we've discussed about the city repairing...
We've made that commitment, though. As part of the right-of-way utilization permit, we will put that specific language and condition on that permit.
So, she still can use it as a right-of-way?
Correct. She can use it for the intended purpose that she wants to use.
Absolutely. And we agreed that we would repair it?
If they should ever have to.
That'll be in the paperwork. Yes, sir. All right. Thank you. Mr. Attorney, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. We have Ordinance Number 2028. This is the second reading. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida voluntarily annexing approximately 17.6 acres of real property lying along the west side of Palmetto Street, north of Carolyn Lane, and south of Getford Road. Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 2028?
Ms. Lori, is this the property where the gentleman has the driveway that was going to, he was going to get blocked off with his property?
Mr. Driver owns a property adjacent that has no legal access. He has been using the property subject to this annexation for years to access his property. The property owner has been working with him and has given him verbal permission and a key to the gate to continue to use the access. They have had some negotiations about potentially purchasing his property that have not moved forward. However, I have assured Mr. Driver that if a development plan comes forward for this annexation parcel, we will apply our land development regulations and the interconnectivity of uses requirement as well as block structure and work with whomever cements that development plan to ensure that anyone who doesn't have legal access, including Mr. Driver, will have a manner in which to access their property by vehicle.
Thank you. I thought that's one I remembered, and I just wanted to make sure we were leaving him access. So, thank you so much. Sorry, Mr. Attorney.
No problem. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on Ordinance 2028? Seeing none, we'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you so much. Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance Number 20-28. What's the will of our commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Ordinance Number 20-28 on its second reading.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second?
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye. Excuse me, aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 2029. This is the second reading. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan, changing the future land use designation of approximately 17.6 acres of recently annexed real property located on the east and west side of Palmetto Street, north of Carolyn Lane, and south of Getford Road from urban medium in Lake County to mixed commercial residential MCR in the City of Eustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 2029? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of this hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 20-29. What's the will of our commission?
I move to approve.
Thank you, sir.
Second?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Just try this again. Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Next item is Ordinance 2030. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the suburban neighborhood design district designation to approximately 17.6 acres of recently annexed real property located along the east and west side of Palmetto Street, north of Carolyn Lane, and south of Getford Road. Would any members of the public like to speak on Ordinance 2030? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance 20-30. What's the will of our commission?
Make motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberthi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
This is the first reading of Ordinance 2032. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida voluntarily annexing approximately 20.691 acres of real property located on the north side of County Road 44A and east of Eldorado Lake Drive. Ms. Lori Barnes?
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Development Services Director, presenting Ordinance Numbers 2032, 2033, and 2034. Staff does present these group of ordinances in one presentation. However, the attorney will read each ordinance individually, one for annexation, one for future land use assignment, and one for a designed district assignment. Development Services has received an application for voluntary annexation from Appian Engineering on behalf of the property owner, Carol Harper Trustee. Their request is voluntary annexation of 20.691 acres of property on the north side of County Road 44, east of East Lake Eldorado Drive. The applicant has requested a Eustis suburban residential land use designation and a rural neighborhood design district. This map shows the location of the property in association with the current city limits and the Lake County Lake May Park lying between the city limits and the subject property. This is an aerial view of the same property that shows the city limits, the Mount Doris city limits, and outlying development in Lake County. In 1987, the city and the county entered into a joint planning area agreement. This map shows the city limits in pink, and the green boundary line is the city's joint planning area boundary. 33 years ago, the city and the county agreed that the city could provide urban services in this JPA boundary and that those properties logically should be annexed into the city The property is in the city's joint planning area. The property does meet the Florida statutes for voluntary annexation, and the site is contiguous to the city limits pursuant to Chapter 171 of the Florida statutes. Now, you'll note on the prior map, there is a Lake County park lying between the current city limits and the subject property. The Florida statutes provide that properties that are separated from the city limits by a road, a lake, or a county park shall not be prevented from voluntary annexation under this part. The city did provide notice to Lake County according to the Florida statutes and advertised the proposed annexation for two consecutive weeks. Annexation of this property begins to fill in the city's natural growth boundary. Staff reviewed the application according to Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, per the city's future land use element appendix in the comprehensive plan, and per Chapter 102 of the land development regulations. The Florida statutes includes 12 primary indicators regarding an amendment to show that it does not encourage the proliferation of sprawl. Your staff report includes an evaluation of each of these factors, and this amendment does not have the indicators that sprawl would not be discouraged. The Florida statutes also have identifiers that an amendment is determined to discourage the proliferation of urban sprawl if it meets those indicators. There are eight indicators listed, and an amendment discourages sprawl if it achieves four of the eight. In this case, six of the eight indicators do apply. Staff evaluated the request according to the city's future land use element. Staff evaluated the request according to the city's future land use element. General public services and facilities are available. There are water and sewer utilities approximately a mile and a half or 8,000 feet away located at Clear Lake Drive and Estes Road, Estes Road and Lake Lincoln, and also Orange Avenue near Brookshire. The city Public Works Department has indicated that we do have adequate capacity to serve up to and including the maximum development potential on this property if it were to be developed in the future. Regarding fire service, the city already has an automatic aid agreement with the county for fire and emergency services. In this area, through that auto aid agreement, Eustis Engine 23 is the primary service provider in this area already. According to Chief Gary Calhoun, police response times to this area will be five minutes or less. And in regards to other public services, if at such time that the property does develop, the city would receive impact fees and additional ad valorem tax dollars should we need to provide any additional capacity. As mentioned in the LPA meeting, we reviewed the site for any apparent natural resources, and there are not any apparent natural resources on the site that are in need of preservation. However, if a development is proposed in the future, environmental studies including animal and vegetative species as well as Wakava required studies for carst features, et cetera, would be required to be submitted for review and evaluation at that time. Staff did a preliminary analysis for transportation and found that County Road 44 does have capacity to serve the proposed increase in traffic that could be proposed, that could be seen as part of the development on this property. Again, at time...
I'm gonna ask everyone to please stop that. And as we continue the meeting, when you get your opportunity to speak, we're not gonna put up with heckling, not gonna put up with cheering, clapping. We're gonna keep it with decorum, or you will be asked to leave the chambers. Thank you. Go ahead, Lori.
If a development is proposed in the future, the city's regulations require a traffic impact study be submitted, prepared by a traffic engineer. Those studies are submitted to the city for review. We have an independent traffic consultant that reviews those studies, as well as the FDOT if there is a state road in the proximity, and the Lake County Public Works Department. These traffic studies are very detailed, and they are based on the end use and the number of dwelling units or other associated uses, and they will indicate if any improvements may be required to support the development. City staff, county staff, and state staff have in the past reviewed these studies and in some cases required additional improvements for a property. Regarding schools, the Lake County School Board Planner has provided a capacity review based on the maximum development potential on the site and finds that there are adequate facilities for schools based on the maximum development scenario. If a development is proposed in the future, the school board does require a concurrency review and will require any proportionate fair share agreement to provide additional capacity if any is needed at the time of development. As to the comprehensive plan review, this is a view of Lake County's future land use map. Lake County's future land use map shows the majority of the City of Eustis is either urban low with an R1 zoning or rural transition with either an R1 or an AG future land use. These future land uses do not take into consideration the city's urban growth boundary or provision of municipal services. And it's... The future land use designations on the county map provide a vision to the city residents and county residents that these densities are appropriate in these areas. With municipal services, as we have mentioned before, a higher density is appropriate and does reduce the per capita cost to provide utilities. The Eustis future land use map again shows the majority of the residential development in the city limits as suburban residential. You will see that orange over the majority of the city. The future land use requested on this property is suburban residential. The closest property in the city limits to this property is designated suburban residential Staff does find the Eustis future land use designation proposed is consistent with the other properties in the city limits and the city's comprehensive plan. The suburban residential designation is more intense than the Lake County designation, but that is to be expected when transitioning from unincorporated areas to a municipality. Now, Eustis has a unique code inasmuch as we have a form-based code. Our form-based code uses future land use and design district designations to regulate and control development. The design district designations are required to provide for a consistent transect between urban, suburban, and rural areas. Their requested designation for this property is rural neighborhood, which is consistent with the existing development transect in the area. And the pairing of that suburban residential future land use and the rural neighborhood design district will help provide for compatibility with surrounding development, including requirements to provide for clustering of residential units, to provide for substantial open space, and additional buffers along public right-of-ways to preserve the view Staff provided public notice as required by the city's land development regulations. Seventy-four notices were sent out to property owners within 500 feet. And the required notices were posted in the daily commercial. The Eustis public hearing signs were also posted on the site. Staff received a large amount of public input. We included in the presentation the public input that we received through 12 o'clock Up to 12 o'clock noon today, we logged 35 contacts. Eight of those were duplicative. A total of 23 of those contacts opposed, keep in mind, some were husbands and wives, some were listed as husbands and wives together, some were listed separately. So depending on how you do the math, whether you consider a property owner as a husband and wife group together, or you consider them separately, the numbers may come out differently. Total of 23 opposed. Seven of those opposing were in the 500-foot proximity. Thirteen were not within the 500-foot proximity, and we had one person expressing support who does not live in the 500-foot proximity. Now, after noon, we received five additional emails from Cindy Newton, who is not in the 500-foot proximity. We received an objection letter from Lloyd Kennedy, who is on this list as well on your screen, who objects to the annexation land use. And we received an email from Bridget Camo, who lives at 36328 Foxwood Drive. I'm not able to determine at this time if she's within the 500-foot proximity or outside. And she objects to the rezoning. I believe the city commission has been provided with email forwards of all the emails we received and paper copies here at the meeting tonight. Staff does recommend approval. Their requested annexation is consistent with the joint planning area and the Florida statutory requirements, as well as the city's strategic plan envisioning documents. Annexation would begin to fill Eustis's natural growth boundary and provide additional ad valorem revenue to the city, and we find that the proposed designations are consistent with the Eustis Comprehensive Plan and the land development regulations. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Ms. Barnes? Seeing none, is the applicant or the applicant's representative present?
Good evening, Council. We are in agreement with staff's recommendation of approval. It's consistent with the JPA. It's established. I was not anticipating...
Excuse me, could you please state your name for the record?
Oh, I apologize. My name's Major Stacy.
Thank you.
With Appian Engineering address 2221 Lee Road, Suite 27, Winter Park, Florida, 32789.
Thank you so much.
I... We are in agreement with staff's recommendation of annexation, and I do have some correspondence from Mrs. Carol Harper that I would like to share. Dear fellow property owners, I'm in favor of annexation because I feel it will enhance and improve the entire area. Furthermore, it offers the city of Eustis the ability to expand, especially considering the encroachment of land by our neighboring municipalities. No one has approached me to purchase or develop my acreage, but I believe annexation would increase all surrounding property values going forward. I thank you for allowing me to express my support and to the City of Eustis for the possibility to annex respectfully Carol Harper. I would just like to say, in addition to agreeing with staff's recommendation, there are no plans to improve this property. I don't have any LiDAR. I don't have any drainage calculations. But I am happy to have the opportunity to be here to listen to the community. Some things that were brought up earlier was the flooding around Blue Lake, which is not related to this property. However, we use speedometers and our groundwater readings. And so while there is no proposed development, this forum will give me an opportunity to take notes. If something were to come up next year, 10 years in the future, I'll know what things are important to the community. And I'm available for any questions if anyone has any concern.
Seeing none, thank you, sir. Mr. Nibber, do we have any cards?
I have a few. And then Mr. Tom Brown? As we open this for public comment, Mr. Brown, you can start working your way up. Tom Brown?
Yeah, I'm on the next parcel.
The next parcel? Okay. That's fine.
I'd say north, but I'd say south.
You're all right. As we open this up for public comment, we would ask that you keep it to three minutes. Please be respectful to our staff and to the city commission and to each other, okay? If you have filled out a card, if you've already heard a statement that you agree with, lift your hand if you don't want to come up and speak. We got it, okay? I have personally read every email that's come in. I think I stopped reading emails at 5:00 this afternoon. So I've got some of the most recent emails that have come in. Not trying to stop you from speaking, just letting you know we could have a long night if we let everybody in here go and go and go. So...
Tammy Pena.
And again, when you come up to the mic, just give your name for me so that it's on the record, okay?
Hi, I'm Tammy Pena. I actually live 35800 Burgess Terrace. I'm at the end of Burgess Terrace. The property... This property in question for annexation, buts up to the two properties that lie my entire five-acre property line. The reason why we're here to oppose this today is because I believe that this property is not contiguous to the Florida State statute. It says that it needs to be substantially contiguous where there's only 185 feet that's actually contiguous to the, not county park, but the conservation area of Lake May instead of the whole entire boundary. This is being submitted to you as a proposal of all of three property owners coming together for an annexation, and that whole property boundary should have some type of contingency versus just 185 feet of approximately 22,000 feet of boundary. This kind of looks like it's gonna be like an urban sprawl, like a finger-like thing. When you look at the City of Eustis map today, you have the condensation over to the right, but now you're gonna have this little... Look, that's gonna end up over on the right-hand side, completely separated from urban services. Excuse me.
Take your time with this.
Urban services, as well as police and fire assistance. The water and sewage lines are a mile and a half away. For, to City of Eustis to consider expanding that out to this area would be extensive. You would have to actually go either across the conservation area or 140-acre blueberry, organic blueberry farm that's bordering these properties as well in question. Sorry. All of the neighboring residents that are around that are parcels that are five acres or more. They're all agricultural. They have livestock, my myself. Two of the properties that are coming up in the next quarter and lie my entire five-acre property line. You can imagine that my entire lifestyle is going to change. I do have several livestock. I have horses, I have cattle, I have goats, I have chickens that are gonna be a concern now that having the density change from one house per five acres to five dwelling units to one acre, that is a huge difference for this area. It's not consistent with the whole area that's around here. I'd like to beg to differ with the school zone that Lori Barnes brought up. The school actually did an evaluation based on the current county zoning of R1, one house per one acre, and that's where they accommodated and said that they can do the capacity, but it makes it up to 99% for Seminole Springs, and it makes it up to 90% for Eustis Hot. So that's only at one house per one acre that they did that evaluation without looking at the growth that could happen in the area in the next five years. So that actually goes against Lori Barnes stating that it went toward the maximum possible suburban density. That's not the case. The traffic concerns here in the 2024 plan, they do have 44A looking to be at a four-lane, but it's not today. The traffic that's going through that area now, those of us that live there know that Thrill Hill and 44A is one of the deadliest intersections in Lake County. I've actually almost been hit by cars there because of my kids at the school bus on Burgess Terrace. I had to get a school bus stop sign ahead because we had pileups that they would come bearing off the road, not knowing that a bus would stop there as they come up the hill.
If you would wrap it up for me, you've reached your three minutes.
The traffic capacity for part of this property, they didn't do a traffic capacity for Thrill Hill itself. And the extreme elevations that are there, there's a lot of blind driveways. So there's several things with this that just don't seem to make sense based on the laws and what's available with the surrounding areas. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here. Simon Morris? Mr. Morris? Simon Morris? If you could, when you come up and give your name, when you start to talk, if you'll get into that microphone, we are recording, and if we have to use it later, we'll have it, okay?
Simon... Simon Morris. I'm sure you heard that. I hear about all these staff, you know, how they figured out that this would work. Do anybody that's, does these things live anywhere in this area? I mean, all the... You do?
I live in Park Place.
Do you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, over there?
Yes, sir.
Near those peaks?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I live there, and there's no way we can have more traffic and stuff there. This is crazy. It's like a money grab. It's what it looks like to me. I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Bill Buckner?
Bill Buckner? I live at 36130 east of Eldorado Lake Drive. I share 660 feet of lot line with the Harper Trust Fund property to the south of me. It's just to the south. Myself, and I'm sure most of my neighbors are against anything, but I rule residential designation of the Harper property. So this is about the city considering to use what they think is a loophole in the law to use. the law to use the tiny lot line of the southeast corner of the Lake May Nature Reserve to get their foot in the door to force their suburban residential high-density subdivision into our rural community. When I stand on my front porch and look west at my front lot line, I'm about 40 foot above the street. That's the type of slopes we're dealing with. You can't see it on the maps. The whole area is like that. The neighbor next, the property next to me, it slopes into my property quite a bit, you know, not as much as mine, but I'm concerned about the sewage problems that they would have to get the sewage uphill and out of there. Rural residential, you're dealing with one house per acre. I'm not against developing into rural residential, one house per acre. The water runoff from the Harper property runs into my property. The water runoff behind me pretty much comes all the way from 439 and through Calhoun, Thrill Hill, East El Dorado, works its way down into Lake May and Lake El Dorado, through water runoff, seepage, what have you. The, uh, the problem with it is when you start covering up that land with roads and houses, as you know, there could be any more, uh, seepage, and it's just going to run off down the roads, wherever. You're supposed to contain it, but that depends on the developer. So for me, responsible development means protect and enhance rural residential neighborhoods, ensure access to emergency services, ensure access to enough daily necessities like groceries, gas. Up to the last six months, the lesson we should have learned is high density and overcrowding doesn't work. Preserve our open spaces, preserve our natural reserves, respect our private property rights. I say vote no to the urban sprawl, land grab, money grab, suburban residential, land destruction in rural areas.
Thank you, sir.
Lloyd Kennedy Jr.?
Lloyd Kennedy, Burgess Terrace. I would add some sentiment to what we just heard from everybody in front of us. I know you don't want to be repeating everything, but I have done some research in the past couple of weeks that have kind of, I've never thought I'd be looking into this type of stuff, like annexations and contiguous, and I have reached out to a couple land use attorneys just to kind of get their opinions on where we stand, and I think it's the right thing to do to be prepared for what may come. Just like the last guy said, I'm not against development, you know. I think that, you know, people should realize that the woods aren't going to stay the wood. Something's going to happen. But unfortunately, suburban residential is not the right thing in this area. I mean, I moved there, my wife and I bought property just about four years ago this month, and on Burgess Terrace, and five-acre lot, and we noticed the surrounding areas. We looked at the future land use maps because we were trying to get out of the quarter-acre lots, something a little more open area, and so we went out and we noticed what everybody else was building. So we tried to match the mimicking areas, and I think we've done a great job. I know one of my neighbors back here that didn't even know that we existed. She knew we put the house in, but she'd never seen us, because that's how we tried to live. We want to be, you know, other than being here, we want to be unseen, unheard. That's how we want to live in our area. So we've heard a lot earlier about 1.5 miles to water and sewer, and I know that with money, you can move it. You can get it there. But what I also don't realize is it's about 1.5 miles before you find some urban residential if you look at the map. I drew them out. I have it right here in front of me. Drew some circles on Google Earth. 1.5 miles, you're not going to find very many suburban residential areas there. I'm sorry, useful. It is a big reach to go from where we are. I know that the, 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 um, staff report says that suburban residential is the most commonly used in the city of Eustis, but that doesn't mean you have to use it. I mean, you're going to be on the furthest outskirts. The JPA shows the Thrill Hills the very furthest end, which is another problem, because one of these parcels is outside of that. I don't know if you paid attention to that or not. That's coming up in a few minutes, but on the very edge, you don't have to be suburban residential. You can probably, you can use your other designation that you have if you really don't have to do this. But again, I still believe that through the annexation, that this isn't even, it's not contiguous. So I think it's not, it's kind of a moot point, in my opinion, to even do that. But the realization for me is, I understand something's going to be built someday. It will not stay what it's, but this, this is not the right thing, and you guys can do the right thing right now of making sure that doesn't happen and changing the way this moves forward. So I, sentiments with Tammy, Thrill Hill, if you haven't been on it, drive it. If you think this kind of, this suburban residential, you come up that hill and you're going to have that potential subdivision right there, not a good idea. So again, I urge you guys to vote no. I urge you to listen to the community. I know we are not people who vote inside the city limits. We are unincorporated Lake County, but your city duty to the people, I hope, will reach out to us as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cindy Buckner?
I would like to thank you all first for sharing your evening with us and listening with a compassionate and understanding minds. I am here to speak for the children and for the environment and for the animals. I live on the property as well. My dad is Phil Buckner, so our property is right next to the lands that Carol is wanting to build upon. And I would like to voice that growing up next to this land in a rural area, area, is very spiritual, and I would like for us to all remember the spirituality in rural areas and what that provides for us all on a personal level, especially those of us that have animals to take care of as well. In response to the Lake May Reserve being right across the street, I would like for you to take into consideration that if that land is uprooted, that the animals will be infected, that are at the Lake May Reserve. They need land surrounding them to feel safe in as well. So if that land is proper, uh, misused, then they won't feel safe to be in that land either. So having that reserve would pretty much just be, you know, not so much a reserve at that point. I would also like for us to remember that we need to be responsive in these situations and not reactive in regards to how we use our money. I understand that Carol has inherited a lot of money recently, so please take that into consideration in regards to the reactiveness and it all. I think we can have a nice comparison with us all experiencing the COVID-19 and how our actions do cause ripple effects with everyone around us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Brent Davidson?
Brent Davidson, Mayor Vice, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I have two areas of expertise that speak to this discussion this evening that I'd like to bring to bear, and I'll be as quick as possible. My first area of expertise is I moved to this area when I was 23 years old. I built residence here. I raised my family here. I have two daughters that still live in the community and contribute to the community in the medical field on a daily basis. I travel this road on a daily basis, all these roads. What I discuss here today concerns all three of these properties. The land that passes through this area, the roads that are used, are highly used now. We all know that. The, the travel back and forth is something to be concerned of. I actually raised my children, saying, when you go through these intersections, you have to slow down, not just look, you physically have to slow down. I've seen many, many, many accidents. So as a resident and somebody who raised a family in this community with what's going on out there now, it really distresses me to look into adding more residents in here. And my understanding is this land use could be up to five residents per acre. Now, as was brought up earlier, I'm not going to repeat that. We all share the same concern. My concern is that we limit this to one resident per acre. Now I'll speak to my second area of expertise. I'm retired law enforcement, Seminole County Sheriff's Office, 25 years. I retired as a watch commander. I lived in Altamont Springs. I looked to build in Deltona in Volusia County, decided not to build there and to bring my family out to Lake County for a reason, because of all the wonderful things that we know about Lake County, and that's why I chose to raise my family. But as a law enforcement officer, starting from the age of 19, 1984, in Seminole County, I saw these issues come time and time and time again. We're familiar with Longwood. Anybody that's driven Altamont Springs lately, I drove it today. Anybody that's driven through Casper, anybody that's driven through these other areas, you'll see that these decisions that you're making today have lifelong impacts. Not only that, there's liability for the city that I would suggest you very strongly concern yourself about. The liability depends upon your actions tonight and how exposed the city is. I would strongly challenge the police chief, and if he's here this evening, I'm not sure if the chief is here, chief, I would, I would strongly challenge his notion that the five-minute response. I would agree that five-minute response is possible in a emergency situation if we have nearby officers, but unless you're willing, as a city, to designate minimum mandatory staffing for fire department, for law enforcement, and he won't tell you this because he has to work here, but I will tell you this, that unless you somehow support that and you somehow pay for that, that's not going to be possible. And to drive additional residents in here and to put multiple residents on one-acre property, I'll wrap up in just a second. Thank you, sir, is going to be an issue. One of the comments that was made earlier, this would be a great way to help pay for some of the utilities. Yes, I agree. The more people you pack in, the easier it's going to be to pay for it. But I also suggest to you that maybe we consider this differently, is the property value could be increased by maintaining this type of one resident, one acre. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, I'm Lee Conger. Hello, everybody. And I'm not going to take too much time other than to second what Tammy said and what the gentleman that was just up here said, because I think the density is a huge issue, and I think infrastructure is a huge issue and needs deeper consideration for whatever you do.
Thank you, Lee.
Igor Hemery?
Commissioners, my name is Igor. I really live on Estes Road, and gee, you know, I started coming to talk about stuff in this area in the last century. I've seen Eustis Commissioners grow old and die. I've seen my hair gray in that time. So it is not with excitement that I'm here today. I'm upset to have to be here once again. There are, if you travel on 44 from the so-called bypass intersection, where we have two ugly drugstores and two ugly grocery stores, travel to the east along 44A, you'll pass a number of parcels that were scheduled for development over the last many years, and some of them remain vacant today. Some next to the Lake May preserve. It's a preserve. And it's unconscionable that you would use that as a camel's nose to get the city out of this area. Now, I would suggest that you could accept Lori's in the stats report, or you could disagree with it. And I would suggest that you do need to disagree with it because timeliness is a key consideration. Timeliness is how all development should be brought before the city. When it's time, it should happen. And is this timely? No, it is not. There's a lot of vacant land that needs to be filled in. That helps the existing landowners, and it helps the city. The more development you get downtown, the better it is for the businesses downtown and the property owners downtown and the infrastructure. You know, you have seen the studies, I know you have, that suggest that single-family detached homes are the most expensive development that you can have. It never pays its own way. Never. You have to have fire. You have to have police. You have to have all the other services. People demand parks. All of those things cost more money than you ever get from taxes of each of those houses. So by annexing this property, you obligate yourself to a negative return on your taxes. The taxpayers of Eustis, the community in general, ask you not to do that. I ask you not to annex this and the related properties. When it's time, we will all know it's time. The development will move progressively. The staff talked about natural, what is it, natural growth boundary? What did she say? Is it natural growth boundary development? There's nothing natural about going from the outside in. The natural growth pattern is from the center out. The center should develop first, and then you get to the edge. There should be a reasonable transition from dense urban to low-density rural. This concept of developing this annexed land is incompatible with the current land uses in the area. People made decisions based on land patterns. They moved out there. They've established the lifestyle. Please, respect our lifestyles. Vote against this annexation.
Thank you.
That's all the cards I have for this specific item.
Mayor, we have three items of correspondence that the parties were not available, not available that we're going, I'm going to read, and then we also have-
There's a few folks that still want to speak on this before they move on.
Understood.
Go right ahead.
Your discretion. Would you like me to read these now?
Yeah.
And then after that, Mary will indicate the other emails that we received, and then we'll allow additional public comment. Cindy Newton sent several emails. I'm just going to choose one of them. All five of them are in the record. This is an email dated September 28th, Senate 611. This is to read and to the record during the October 1st, 2020 meeting. We oppose the voluntary annexation of approximately 20.691 acres located north CR44A and east of El Dorado Lake Drive. The Florida statute states contiguous is defined in subsection 171.03111 to mean that a substantial part of the boundary of the territory sought to be annexed by a municipality is coterminous with a part of the boundary of the municipality. Clearly, this parcel of land does not have a substantial part of the boundary of the territory coterminous with a part of the boundary of the municipality and should therefore not be subject to volunteer, I think that means voluntary annexation. We also oppose the land designation change to S.R. With a subdivision abutting the parcel, a development would be required to follow the 85% op with ordinance, so more dense development would not be allowed. Therefore, a change in land use designation would be moot and not needed and would most likely be challenged in court if passed. Thank you, Charles and Cindy Newton, Lake Swatera Drive. The next is from Leslie Campion in her capacity as Chair of the County Commission. She is not available this evening and asks that we read her letter. Dear Mayor Holland, honor about September 3rd, 2020, Lake County received a notification of voluntary annexation from the city of Eustis indicating that multiple parcels in the unincorporated county are being considered for annexation with the first public hearings taking place this evening. The parcels are located on the north side of County Road 44A, east of El Dorado Drive, on the south side, CR44A, west of Thrill Hill Road, and on the east side of Thrill Hill Road, north of Reedy Road. A map is attached for reference. Although these properties are not contiguous to the city limits, the annexation is moving forward based on the fact that the Lake May Reserve sits between the municipal boundaries and the boundary of the two properties shown and read on the map. The definition of contiguous appears to allow a municipality to essentially jump over a publicly-owned county park to annex properties on the other side. Several county commissioners have received letters of concern from unincorporated residents who fear that if the annexation takes place, their rural lifestyles will be severely- who fear that if the annexation takes place, their rural lifestyles will be severely and negatively impacted. Therefore, I am reaching out to you on behalf of the County Commission seeking more information on the proposed annexation. The notification that was provided to the county indicates that the current future land use is either rural transition or rural under the county's comprehensive plan. Both the rural transition and rural categories allow a maximum density of one dwelling unit per five net buildable acres. If annexed, the city's comprehensive plan, future land use category for all properties is proposed to be suburban residential. The suburban residential category allows a maximum of five units per one acre. The intent behind the suburban residential category is to provide for a mix of single-family detached patio homes and townhouse-type dwellings in a suburban atmosphere. As you can see from the map, this area of the county is most definitely rural in nature and does not lend itself to a suburban atmosphere. With the above in mind, I am requesting that more information be provided regarding the proposed densities for these properties. Can you or staff please provide the following additional information so that the county can better understand the plans for the properties if the annexation is approved by the City Commission? How will central water and sewer be provided to these properties? Please show on a map or aerial where the nearest water and sewer lines are located. How will police and fire protection be provided to these properties? Please show on a map or aerial where the closest city police and fire stations are located. How will the City Commission preserve the rural character of the surrounding properties, which are primarily large lot homestead and agricultural acreage? Can the city provide a proposed conceptual plan of how the properties will be developed if annexed and approved for a suburban residential future land use? Is the City Commission aware that the properties shown in blue on the attached map are outside the boundaries of the 1987 joint planning agreement? The County Commission will be further discussing this annexation on October 13th, 2020. It is my hope that the above requested information can be provided to that date so that the commissioners can have the most accurate information upon which to make a decision. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Leslie Campion. And the last of the three emails is Pat Duncan, sent to our city clerk on September 26 at 11:51 a.m. Please record the following in its entirety into the record for this meeting. Thank you. I am writing regarding annexation and future land use ordinances 2032 and 2040 and the upcoming hearing on October 1st. I am unable to attend in person and am requesting my comments be read into the public record in their entirety. I believe I speak for my friends and neighbors in stating we are unequivocally opposed to annexations themselves, as well as the proposed change in land use designation for a multitude of reasons. The suburban residential designation conflicts with the city's own comprehensive plans and is a blatant stretch into the established rural community. SR does not represent a rural character and lifestyle as stated in your own plan. Up to five housing units per acre of land does not meet anyone's definition of rural. How are services to be provided in this area? Current road usage, need for services, and traffic issues can only increase with a higher density development. We bought our homes in the country, some of us 40 years ago, to get away from this very problem. It's crystal clear this is nothing but a land grab for cash at the expense of our quality of lives. We plan to follow up on our available legal options. With all due respect, please confine yourselves to issues affecting the city and leave us in the county alone. Patricia Duncan. And that's the last of those three emails.
Thank you.
Mary?
There were a number of other emails received. It's not always clear if they're objecting to all three sets or a particular one, but I'm going to mention them all at this juncture, if you don't mind. And I do want to inform everyone that all of the emails are made a permanent part of, are made a record, see if I can speak, a part of our permanent record, which is our agenda packet, and those are considered permanent retention. The following individuals are Amber Hardy, and all of these are either in opposition or expressing concern. Michael and Sarah Tidwell. John and Teri Deisberg, or Deisberg, I'm not sure how to pronounce that woman. Mr. and Mrs. Spigliolia. Kenneth Robach. Rembrandt and Catherine Gray. Miranda Rinkle. Lisa Gilkinson. Joe Crawford. Thomas Hickson. Allison Thomas. Chelsea Valilla. Mary Lou Morris. Vanessa and Corinne Ulette. Marcia Pease. Margie Soruga. Stevie Soruga. Chelsea Soruga. Thomas Bailey. And that's all.
Commissioner Born, did you receive these emails and did you read them?
At least I read till about 5:00 o'clock.
All right. Commissioner Allen.
I did also.
Commissioner LaHoope, vice mayorly. And I did also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Would any members of the public like to speak on this annexation request ordinance 2032?
George?
My name is George Lazzabadi. I live at 751 Mount Dora Road in Eustis and also own property in the vicinity of this proposal. You know, I'm listening to some interesting things I wanted to share. I certainly believe that everybody should have their opportunity to voice their concerns and their thoughts. I live on 15 acres and I've been there for a long, long time, decades. And I've watched four, five developments come up next to me, densities ranging in these areas. And I know this is probably not popular for some of these people to hear today, but I still love where I live. It's still great. It's a reality that everyone expects at some point. I understand some of these people are not ready for it, and I sympathize with that. Development is unavoidable. They talk about the traffic and the intersection problems that are arising. I saw that happen as well, and I saw DOT and the roads change and lights come in and different things done to support that growth. One interesting thing from the retired Seminole County Watch Commander, I too am retired from the sheriff's office, and I have a few thoughts on one issue, that is a five-minute questionable response time. I watched, a little over a year ago, one of our captains get shot, and within five minutes, we had over 200 police officers there. When there is a need, Eustis is there. And they need to see that as well. And he sits in the back alive and well today. So facts are important to know. The petitioners have a right to request annexation. It's their property owner's rights. I heard people talking about owner rights, the rights are to the person with the property, and they have that right. Infrastructure is in place. It's in our 30, I think 33-year plan, from what I heard. Annexation is vital for parts of the city and for our growth. A growing city as Eustis must utilize annexation as part of its growth. A vote to approve this annexation is a vote for growth and an affirmation of property owner's rights. We should respect everyone's right to voice their opinion for or against it. However, remember, while there might be 20, 23, whatever those numbers Ms. Barnes were talking about who are in opposed to it, and maybe more here, there are 21,663 residents that you have an obligation to in this city as well. The growth is part of keeping our taxes where they need to be. Please hear their silence. My final statement is any objection to annexation by any commissioner, in my opinion, in my sole opinion, is a death sentence to our city's growth and to our future. It's inevitable, though unfortunate for some, inevitable. Thank you.
Any other members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2032?
Three more, George. Three more.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll keep this brief. I did want to mention traffic, but a different kind of traffic. I'm sorry, Kevin Kline, I live on 37137 Calhoun Road, not far away. My family moved out to this area about two and a half years ago, and frankly, I can't remember living anywhere else. It's just so lovely out there. We lived in a very dense urban area over at Sullivan Ranch in Mount Dora, lovely neighborhood, but the kids are getting big and there were a lot of activities that they liked to do that involved the outdoors. You remember growing up back in the 70s and 80s where you could ride your bike down the road and go down and jump in the lake for a swim? That's what it's like out here. It's wonderful, right? This is a picture I just wanted to show you guys. This is my daughter on a rescued thoroughbred racehorse. We have on our property, three rescued horses, two rescued dogs, a bunch of chickens we rescued from somewhere. But it's wonderful. It's idyllic out here. And one of the things that she likes to do with a friend of hers who lives on Thrill Hill Road, is they like to go trail riding. And so traffic, okay, what does traffic have to do with any of this? If you add a couple of hundred homes to the area, all of the other surface roads are going to increase on traffic, not just 44A. Calhoun, Thrill Hill, Bill Morris, all these areas are going to continue to have more and more. We already have a ton of people cut off of 44A down Calhoun to get out to you, Matilla. It's just going to get worse and worse. So when you think about traffic, think about the horses, think about the lifestyle that's out there, think about little girls like my Kaylee and the neighborhood that we brought her into and that this group of people are just trying to preserve. Thank you very much and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else?
Friend Davis, again, I'd like to respond to the direct question. The gentleman's point referenced to over 200 officers responding is accurate, there's no question about that. I too have been shot in the line of service and I've been shot at five times. And I will tell you that when emergency call goes out for law enforcement, every single law enforcement officer for three or four surrounding counties respond. I will remind you that while that is taking place, all residents in all of those counties and all of those jurisdictions have no coverage. Now, the point is we'll take it, that's absolutely correct. But these are things that are not really taken into consideration in forward planning, and it leaves law enforcement and public safety in positions to have to cover these things. As a deputy sheriff in Seminole County, I often had to respond to city jurisdictions requesting assistance as they were out of manpower. We also requested, that's what mutual aid is all about, that's fire for law enforcement. So I want to clarify that. There's a big difference between an emergency call, officer down, and routine calls for service. We went to minimum mandatory staffing to make sure that there was minimum coverage at all times. Please take that into consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else like to speak on ordinance 2032?
Mr. Agard?
Thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate all my neighbors up here coming out and speaking up. I wish I would have known about this earlier. I would have written several letters and had them posted, hadn't been more people doing it. I'm sorry, my name is Doug Agard. I live on 36408 East Eldorado Lake Drive. Mostly everything's been said, but I do want to point out the fact that 429 comes in to There is so much traffic. Thrill Hill is the mouth of Altuna, Umatilla, everybody coming to Thrill Hill, down to 44A, Brett Road you can't even get on anymore. But that is the main thorough way to 429. And it is just not ready for this many people. One acre, one house per one acre is how it should be. Period. Thank you.
Is there one more gentleman?
My name's AJ Mascolo, and I live on 36751 East Eldorado Lake Drive. And I'm raising a 10-year-old daughter, and with all this cluster housing being developed, it's going to increase the crime in the area because it'll be low-income housing. It's going to be cheap houses for people to buy with lots of kids and potentially renting the houses out, and the crime's going to increase. And the schools in this area are not good already. My daughter luckily is accepted in Brown Lake, so, you know, I just don't agree with it. I'm okay with the one acre, one house, but I don't want all this crime coming into the area that I live in. Because with those small houses, you're going to have a lot of crime. So I hope you guys will take that into consideration.
Would anyone else like to speak on ordinance 2032?
My name's Bill Duncan. You heard from my wife earlier. We own the property diagonal to Harper's, and I have the cow pasture, and that sets the tone for the area, I think. So if we could keep it one acre, that would be nice. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing for ordinance 2032.
Commissioners, we're going to bring it back to us. Before us, we have ordinance 20-32, what's the will of our commission? I'll make the motion to approve so we can have discussion. Thank you, sir.
I'll second.
Thank you, ma'am. Got it first and a second? We're going to open it for discussion then. Bob, did you want to start us?
Well, please. Let me tell you, this is so difficult for us in the city. I was, when I was appointed to be a city commissioner here back in 2016, my whole thought was to try and continue to grow to the city. I pushed the city manager for three years to make sure we bought three properties here on Fountain Lake or the three properties that were formerly the hospital, because I thought we need to have some growth. We need to be able to make the city survive. In a short time I've been here, we've been called so many different things, and I got tired of that. You may have known that we had a tumultuous two years in 16, 17 and 18. We had a commissioner who was a bit raucous, a bit of a rogue, and we had to address all those issues all the time. We've had people come to us and annex. Of course, obviously, you know, the 21,000 people who are in the city will not come here. It's only people who have vested interests who may lose some sort of a right and that really do show up. So it makes it very difficult. So we find ourselves listening to all the negative, not understanding that there are 21,000 people that we also represent. I like hearing everything you've said. Even I believe sometimes I think, well, maybe it's a stretch. But I also realize I'm the city commissioner for the city of Eustis. I don't work, but I'm not an elected official for unincorporated for Lake County. So I think about the potential for this, for the city. And I think very strongly that it brings a whole new genre of people that come into our community. It's a great opportunity for the city to be able to move forward. And you're right, there are some vacant plots or vacant lots all along the edge on the northern end that hopefully will also be built. We have some that you may not know of already that are happening in Pine Meadows. We have one on Bates, which is still a bit questionable, but we have quite a bit of development going on in Eustis because people are beginning to see that this commission is very, very much forward-thinking. We lost so many opportunities, and I wasn't here at the time, for this commission to be able to grow like you're suggesting, suggesting from the center and out. You know, all that property where the Waterman Hospital is, that was all Eustis property, or could have been Eustis property. And the commission decided because they didn't want any growth that that wasn't going to happen. The city's always been on the tail end of a bad business decision. And I was destined, I'm not running for reelection, this is my last three months here, I was destined to be making a plug for the city of Eustis. My wife and I, as I was mayor for two years, went all across the county, making sure people knew what Eustis was all about. And I'm proud to be an owner. I have an old house, but proud to be an owner of a home here and plan to stay here. So my perspective is a little different than yours. I know you have a great safe haven, but I don't remember anyone thinking that any of the developments that we're going to have are going to impact your lives that greatly. I understand. I went out there and looked, drove around over the weekend, and I looked at a lot of the properties that we're talking about here, obviously. And I wasn't as concerned as you are today. I don't think it's going to change your lifestyle that much. You all have pretty much have buffers. I was kind of surprised, in some areas, there were no trees whatsoever in some of the new lots. I was thinking, what happened here? I'm not sure if there were no trees, or those of you who bought homes there decided to take the trees down, but some of those were not there. I'm just, it's really hard for us to be able to argue, and I don't want to be able to, I don't think I have the skill to be able to give you the other side of the story and tell you, well, you know, well, that's true, there might be some bears there, maybe some fox, we haven't get some of that, even in the city, they'll even not, not bears right now. So there are all those issues that you bring up that I'm not going to be able to defend. But the bottom line is I'm the city of Eustis Commissioner. But the bottom line is I'm a city of Eustis commissioner and I have to look for what the city of Ustis needs for the future. And that's why we make those decisions in here. We believe that this annexation will continue to grow our community and it does help our city. We have been living on taxes and we survived. We don't need that annexation. It would be nice to have it, but we don't necessarily need it at this point. And we do provide great services. We have a tremendous police force and I know there's some smirking and stuff, but you know, this is no longer going to be the city called useless. It's the city of Eustis and I'm very proud to be a commissioner here. And so whatever decision I make tonight is only about the city of Eustis and its future. I don't want to see us go through what we did in the last 20 years. We had some sort of annexation issues. We were being sued and we had eight or 10 years on no activity whatsoever. The city suffered from that. And as you probably know, just like you have a family income, you survive based on growth. The city of Eustis will survive on growth also. No other city will ever be able to just keep within its confines and continue to grow. We saw some things in Mount Dora. They took over some of those sections that may have been planned for Ustis. You know, the Ustis Airport is in Mount Dora? I don't want to be, I don't want to be a city commissioner that loses those opportunities. That's not what I want to do for this commission, for this city. So I'm, I'm very much, I'm pleased that you come out here. Like I said, I read all your emails. I understand what you're calling, talking about, but I could never defend any of the issues that you're saying. I don't think I could defend all those either, but I'll tell you what's right for the city and that is that we move over, we'll move over, we'll move forward with the annexation. So thank you.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
I wrote stuff down.
Uh-oh.
The, I know, we're in trouble. You know, I, I saw the concern about contiguous that was brought up to our city attorney who did say it was supportable. You know, I went right to the statutes and it says, and it's just like Mount Dora did. They hopped for 41, right on across and have continued on to 44. You know, I, I've heard people blaming Mr. Nyberg for all of this. I can assure you, Mr. Nyberg does not drive around looking for property for us to annex. This came from the property owner and as commissioners, we have to review that. I'm a long time been here. My mom went to Eustis Elementary, Eustis High School, rode her bicycle to Lake Joanna because that was country then. And we all know those days have gone. My mom's 90 years old, so yes, that was a long time ago and she'll kill me for saying that. But you know, we've looked at this according to the statutes. It's, it's something that can be done. I just, I wish everyone would go onto our website, go into the land development regulations, look up design districts. I don't think anyone, when we changed and Igor was there, hi Igor, when we changed the land use districts, design districts, because we don't have straight zoning. We have, the land use district was suburban, which is one to five, five a maximum, but it could be one. We have no idea what's being planned out there right now. It could be horse farms. Who knows? We don't know. We don't know. Am I jumping around? I probably am. So we can't, we can't say right now what it's going to be because we can't put a designation on there that's considered contract zoning, which is illegal. We can't do that. So we have to put a designation on it. Suburban residential is again, one to five. Then we've got the rural neighborhood design district on there, which says how it's going to look. So look at the land, our land use, land development regulations. You may see something that you like. So I am, I am for this. I think nothing may happen for 10 years, so how long it took for that little right-of-way to have nothing still happening to it. And having grown up with Carol Harper, I know she'll be very interested and take care of the property.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Alberti, anything?
Well, I, I've been thinking about over the years what has happened to the city and then when we came in and we started, the momentum got going and, and we were making progress and we're still making progress. And things change. And so when you talk about your little five-acre tract or whatever you have, I lived on Rollingwood Trail, which is the next road up off of 439 for, for many years. I bought there specifically. I wanted some acreage, had three children, and the road was paved. A lot of roads out there were not paved when I bought. So I, we bought, got in there, you know, it is a great place to raise kids and on that street, it's a dead-end street. So we didn't get the traffic in and out. It was coming in and it was going out and it was us. So my children, they could be out in the woods because five acres, you can have quite a few trees on it. They would be in the woods and there is a stream that goes through the backyard. But the neighbor behind me probably owned 80 acres and his property was his property. We didn't dare go on his property and he had no reason to really come on my property. But I know that the rural living, the lifestyle and what it is. So I'm not denying you that. But I've sat here and listened and, and for years I've thought, you know, if people want to do that because this area is growing, Claremont was orange groves, right? Yeah, it was orange groves. What is it now? It's housing. It's housing. So you know, so you, you can't stop progress. You can't limit people on their property rights. You have your property and you're there and you're entrenched. And I kind of think like you do that my lifestyle isn't going to change that much. Yeah, you know, you're going to get more traffic on the roads, yeah, until they widen the road or do whatever they need to do. So as, as a builder though, our builders have found that when they come in, they don't get five, five homesites per acre. It just doesn't work out. With all the restrictions that are put on them as far as drainage and open areas and park areas, they don't get five. So I don't know why that scares everybody because nobody can do that. Nobody can fit five with the restrictions there, there are in place. And frankly, you know, make them an offer. You buy. That's the only thing you can do as, as your property, you're next to whoever. If I wanted that property, I would have reached out and said, are you ever going to sell? Because I'd like to buy it. So you, you have options also, but we don't have enough homes in Lake County for the people that live in Lake County and want homes. So it's, it's, it's coming. And everybody says 429, 429, where do you think they're going to go? Easy access to 429. So you know, I feel for you. I understand living out there and having a, having a nice home site, but change is here.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Mayor, any comments?
I wrote something, too.
Right ahead.
I guess my thoughts are that you have a current lifestyle that you're enjoying and you're, you're denied to defend others intruding upon that lifestyle that you have. I guess from my perspective, it's hard, I'm, I'm going to do something else. I'm going to take issue with the gentleman who talked about small, cheap homes because nothing has been decided about it from, from the, what I heard of the owner wants to annex it, but there's no plans. And I don't know where the small, cheap homes came into play. And I don't think the small, inexpensive homes necessarily bring about crime. And so I had to take issue with that because I, I, I don't believe that that's the way we should think of things. And also trying to tell owners of land that they cannot sell their land or do what they want to do with their land. I believe if we were to sit here and tell you what you can or can't do with your land and you thought it was unfair, you would fill this chamber again to oppose it. And so I have a desire to have you think about those things. And I think that growth is painful, but the future of Ustis depends on it. And I know you're talking about thinking that, oh, we don't want to be like Claremont, but people are moving here and we do have a shortage of homes. We have a shortage of land. And so if someone chooses to, to, to sell their land or what they want to do with their land, it's their land and they're going to make that decision and they may, she may or may not develop it. And I guess I heard it before too, that it doesn't necessarily mean that there will be five. And whatever their plans are, the city has rules and regulations and procedures to monitor whatever it is that they're going to do. So you have to, I guess, I would say, trust that the city will not let them do anything that would be overwhelmingly destructive to what you have. Thank you.
Can I just add just one more thing? Do you mind? One of the concerns I would have too is that even, even if we didn't annex that property, I would think that the three parcel owners would still want to have some development there. They'd probably go to Lake County and in that case you would end up with, you know, septic systems and wells. And in our situation, we're providing the, the water and sewer and that's really important for me. If you have some, any concerns about your environment, any more development, and they would also allow, they could allow, or they may not even do it at that point, but they could allow three to five homes to, and, and I think what happens is that it's really a threat to that environment. So from my perspective, the city provides a great service. As you know, we went to Sorenal Springs 10, 15 years ago, 1992, I think, to offer water and sewer all that way because we knew that the city of Ustis was going to be moving pretty quickly. And all that provided a service for those people out there in Sorenal Springs. And I'm not seeing any, or even red tail. I don't see any large development of crime out there. I don't see any of that happening. And there's plenty of fire and police service because they're shared resources. So I think that's extremely important to me to have the environment concerns too so the water and sewer can provide by the city.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. You know, folks, this, this is a hard one for me too. Someone that been born, born and raised here, third generation. I have a grandma, I had a grandmother that, like Karen's mom, graduated from Eustis High School back when it sat where the Methodist Church sits today, back in the twenties. I love our community, love our city, love the rural area of our, of this community. It is beautiful. I do not want Ustis to look like Claremont. I'll get phone calls on this in the morning. Claremont's ugly. They overdeveloped, they overdeveloped. It was not controlled. One of the things we can offer is a control basis of that. Any development that will take place in the future of that property, any of that property, will come back in front of this city commission. I want you to keep that in mind. You're going to get the chance every time something's developed out there to come back to us and talk to us about that. It's one of those, we're not going to do any more public comment. We've closed that part. So when we get to the next ones, if you want to jump up, I'm okay with that, okay? It has been gut-wrenching to watch this. It's been gut-wrenching to watch some of the emails, how nasty the emails get. And I understand it's a heated and it's an emotional thing that, that's going on because we're affecting your lifestyle as well. I understand that. I'm hoping that this will do one thing, that it will bring the chairman that's sitting as our county commissioner and representative of our district back to sit down to talk to us about a little bit development. Instead of flinging the flames of distrust, it's time for us to work together as a city and a county. The emails that have gone back and forth have been absolutely horrendous. I will tell you that the city commission is responding to Commissioner Campione's letter that she sent us. That letter is ready to send, I believe, tomorrow morning. Is it already gone or? All right. It has already been sent back to Commissioner Campione and to the county staff. So we are preparing a response just because we want to be the neighbor, we want to work things out. I will tell you, sitting here, we have sent back many housing developments that have asked for five houses per dwelling unit or five houses per acre. They don't pass. First off, they're never going to pass because of land regulations and wetland regulations here in this area. As long as I sit in a seat here, I promise to try to protect that area as much as we can. That is part of my history and I want to protect it as much as I can, okay? This has two readings, okay? So whatever's decided in front of this commission tonight will come back to us for a second reading more than likely back in December, I believe, okay? That gives us time to have some dialogue with your county commission as well and maybe with you all some more. So whatever decided on any of this tonight, it will be read again in December. You will have another shot at us back then, okay? That's all my comments. Before us tonight, commissioners, we have ordinance number 20-32. What's the will of the city commission?
We have a first and a second, don't we?
Yes. We did, I'm sorry.
Roll call.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry. Yeah, we'll go for a roll call. It's been too long.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
And Mayor, we're at the two-hour mark. Do you want to take a short break at this time or proceed?
Let's, Barbara, you'll kiss. The oldest guy on the bench.
One bottle of water later.
I can wait. Let's, let's try to get through the annexation part. We've got two more there and then, and then we'll go one.
We've got, we're still on the first ordinance on 5.3. Do you want to finish 5.3?
Let's finish 5.3 and then we will move on, okay?
Yes, that one was just 3032, 2032. We still have 2033 and 2034 to consider on this subject product.
Let's go ahead with that then.
Yes, sir. Ordinance number 2033, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Ustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the city of Ustis comprehensive plan pursuant to 163.3187 Florida statutes, changing the future land use designation of approximately 20.691 acres of recently annexed real property located on the north side of County Road 44A, east of Eldorado Lake Drive from rural transition in Lake County to suburban residential SR in the city of Ustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2033? The prior staff report is also part of this hearing.
Ron, did you have anybody for 2033?
Well, I mean, everybody filled out cards to talk about 5.3, 5.4 and 5.5. So do you want me to run through the list of cards?
Anybody like to speak to this item that's before us?
I, I, I'm sorry, good.
Not seeing anybody. Commissioners, we have ordinance 20-33. What's the will of our commission? A motion to approve? Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 2034, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Ustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the rural neighborhood design district designation to approximately 20.691 acres of recently annexed real property located on the north side of County Road 44A, east of Eldorado Lake Drive. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2034? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance number 20-34. What's the will of our commission?
I move for approval.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Morin?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberti?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
And at this time, we're going to take a five-minute break and we'll be back. And at this time, we're going to take a five minute break and we'll be back.
Yes, sir. This is ordinance 2035. The first reading, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately 104.066 acres of real property located on the south side of County Road 44A and west of Thrill Hill Road. Ms. Lori Barnes.
Mayor, Commissioners, Lori Barnes, Development Services Director, presenting ordinance number 2035, 2036, and 2037. A voluntary annexation request, future land use and design district assignment for property south of 40, County Road 44A, west of Thrill Hill Road. Uh, the applicant is Green Consulting Group on behalf of Five Cranes LLC, JTB Thrill Hill, and Thrill Hill Land Trust. The property owners are requesting voluntary annexation of 104.066 acres and assignment of a suburban residential Eustis, future land use designation, and a rural neighborhood design district. This map shows the location of the property in relationship to the city limits, uh, the Lake County Park, Lake May Preserve, and, uh, the property proposed for annexation to the north by ordinance 2032. On adoption of ordinance 2032, the subject property would be contiguous to the city limits on the north.
You heard yourself, didn't you?
This aerial view of the property shows the city, the Eustis city limits, uh, the outdoor city limits and the subject properties, as well as outlying unincorporated developments that have been approved well to the east. In 1987, the city and the county entered into a joint planning area agreement. Uh, 33 years ago, the boundary shown in green was identified as a reasonable area in which the city could serve, um, properties with public services and utilities. The property subject to this request does lie within the joint planning area. The joint planning area, by the way, is also our utility 180 district in which we have agreed to provide water and sewer service. According to the Florida statutes, voluntary annexation requires contiguity. The site is contiguous to the city limits according to the Florida statutes on annexation or on adoption of ordinance 2032. Notice was provided to Lake County and the proposed voluntary annexation was advertised for two consecutive weeks in the daily commercial. And annexation does begin to fill in the city's natural growth boundary, which is our joint planning area. Per chapter 163 of the Florida statutes and the future land use amendment and Eustis Comprehensive Plan in chapter 102 is how we evaluate future land use requests. The Florida statutes discuss discouraging the proliferation of urban sprawl. Uh, as outlined in your staff report, the Florida statutes identify 12 primary indicators and an amendment does not discourage the proliferation of sprawl and those indicators do not apply to this amendment. Uh, the Florida statutes also identify, um, indicators that show an amendment discourage the proliferation of sprawl. Uh, there are eight indicators and if a development achieves four or an amendment achieves four, then it is determined to discourage the proliferation of sprawl. In this case, six of the eight indicators do apply to the proposed amendment. Staff reviewed the request according to our future land use element in regards to general public facilities and services, natural resources, natural features, transportation and water supply, and our comprehensive plan review. Uh, the city does have public services in the area or in close proximity and we do have capacity to serve both water and sewer. This is in an area that is covered by our auto aid agreement for fire and emergency services and, uh, station 23 is one of the primary responders to this area. Uh, as per the, uh, police chief, response time to this, these, this area would be five minutes or less. And if a development occurs in the future, the city would receive impact fees for fire, police, parks, library, water and sewer, which would help to provide additional capacity if it is needed at that time. Uh, the transportation review was preliminary based on a potential maximum development scenario. Uh, and the staff found that the transportation, transportation network would operate within the acceptable levels of services, um, should it develop in the future. However, a full transportation impact statement would be required in the event a development is proposed. Uh, as well as environmental reports to evaluate natural resources or natural features at time of preliminary subdivision plan. Regarding the comprehensive plan review, the Lake County Future Land Use Map, um, designates much of the property in the city's joint planning area as rural transitional. Um, as has been mentioned, rural transitional allows one unit to five acres or one unit to one acre. The county's future land use map does not take into consideration municipal densities or provision of water and sewer services. Uh, the future land use map, um, that the county has adopted gives the impression that these areas would remain undeveloped or extremely limited development. Uh, however, we have a joint planning area that's been in place for 33 years that identifies the areas intended to come into the city limits. The city's future land use map, uh, is shown here. The large orange areas are the areas that are identified as suburban residential future land use. The comprehensive plan states that the majority of residential development in the city limits shall be in suburban residential areas. This map shows the location of the subject properties in relations to existing properties within the city limits with a suburban residential land use designation. Uh, you can see to the west and to the southwest. Staff finds that the proposed land use designation is consistent with the future land use designations within the city limits and the comprehensive plan. Uh, while it is more intense than Lake County rural transitional, it is expected when changing from an unincorporated area to a municipality. Finally, uh, Eustis has a form-based code that uses future land use and design district designations to regulate and control development. Uh, while a suburban neighbor, while a suburban residential land use is being assigned, a rural neighborhood designation is proposed. This rural, rural neighborhood designation, uh, includes some development limitations that require clustered residential development and substantive open space as well as additional buffers along ride of ways to help preserve the rural view set, view shed. Uh, the pairing of the SR future land use and the design district designation of rural neighborhood will help with compatibility with existing development in the area. Staff did notice, uh, 74 property owners in the 500-foot proximity. The required advertisements were posted in the daily commercial. And Eustis Public Hearing signs were posted on the site. We did receive a number of, um, contacts from the public regarding this request. Um, through today at noon time, we, we logged 35 contacts, a total of 23 opposed, seven within the 500-foot, 13 outside the 500-foot, and one in support outside of the 500-foot. Uh, we did receive additional emails after noon today. Uh, five, five additional emails from Cindy Newton, who is outside the 500-foot proximity, registering opposition. One email from Lloyd Kennedy, who is within the 500-foot, registering his objection. And one from Bridget Como at Foxwood Drive. I'm not sure if she's within or outside the 500-foot, uh, also registering opposition. Staff does recommend approval. Annexation is consistent with the, uh, city of Eustis Joint Planning Area Agreement with the county and the Florida statutory requirements. Annexation begins to fill in the city's joint planning area boundary and will provide additional abhorrent tax revenue to the city. And the proposed designations are consistent with the city's Comprehensive Plan and land development regulations. Uh, Tim Green with Green Consulting is here representing the property owner, um, as well as Mr. Brown.
Would the applicant or its representative like to speak on this matter? Ordinance 2035?
Good evening. My name's Tim Green, president of Green Consulting Group, 470 United Avenue, Mount Dora. Also a resident of Eustis at 2132 Lake Lane, in Eustis. Agree with the staff's report. The outline that has been done is very thorough and would like to ask for your support for the annexation, land use, and design district designation. Here for any questions you might have.
Are there any questions? Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2035?
Mr. Brown is here. Did you want to speak, Mr. Brown? All right, sir. Thank you, sir.
Thomas Hickson?
Mr. Hickson, did you still want to speak? There you are.
Good evening.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Thomas Hickson, uh, my family and I own the property on Pony Trail Court. All four parcels. We're affected by this proposal pretty harshly because we're bound not only by this parcel, uh, proposal, but also by the one with the Mount Door Groves on Thrill Hill Road to the, to the eastern boundary. Uh, we'll be affected by 1,200-plus feet on the north side of the property and I think another 6, 700 feet to the east. Uh, as some of the other residents that spoke out, we're retired law enforcement, military, and fire service. Uh, we decided as a family to pick this area after studying many areas around because of the rural character. Uh, as the commissioner mentioned, he went out there and stood there and did some observation on himself. I would welcome him to come to where we are to see where the impact would be to have that much sightline impacted by what is proposed to be high density, what we deem to be sprawl. And me being from South Florida, I know what sprawl is. I do too, not so much a concern, but something to be taken into consideration. I've been a shift commander in patrol. I was a watch commander in major investigations. I saw what annexation did. I saw what incorporation did. I saw what sprawl did. It does impact calls for service at times. Uh, sometime most inconvenient times for both all a public service response. Uh, I know mutual aid comes into play in emergency, you know, situations where emergency personnel may need assistance and you get that 200-person response. But, uh, we're talking about calls for service for the public. So that's a concern of mine as is the, the traffic. Already, we have made several, uh, calls for service at the Lake County Sheriff's Office for the speeding that's already occurring up and down Thrill Hill Road. They're constantly making repairs of potholes. The drain is there. It's horrible. Uh, and we're being impacted already. We have to be very careful pulling out of there already just with the construction that we have going on for the building of our, our homesteads. Now, the other concern that I have is that we all have invested in our own personal infrastructure there. We all built wells. We have septic systems. We took into consideration our neighbors and the character that's there. Uh, we're on a slope. All of the water draining in from this particular parcel does come through and run into all 20 acres. Uh, there was a significant amount of engineering that already went into our parcels with runoff and retention ponds. I am concerned because we have two 300-foot wells on that northern boundary that's contiguous with this particular parcel with sewage or, you know, whatever they're going to do for the utilities. If there's a rupture, how does that impact us? Because those are our only water sources at this point. So, uh, we'd like, you know, everyone knows development is going to happen, but we also want to make sure that the density, uh, is addressed and that it is within the character of the area. And just like we take into consideration our neighbors, we have a horse farm just to the west of us. We wanted to make sure that we weren't impeding on them in any way. This, you know, everyone has their rights as property owners, but as good neighbors, we all want to get along and want to make sure that everyone is harmonious. So that's a concern for us. I have other family members here who are property owners. Uh, and, you know, as you say, there'll be more meetings. We just want to make sure that, we, we're pretty confident we see the annexation as occurring, that you do communicate with the community and that you take our concerns into consideration. We've invested all of our hard-earned money. Some of us are retired. We served the country. We've served our communities. And we'd like a little peace of mind as well to know that, you know, that we're going to be taking, uh, our, our feelings and our investments are going to be considered, if that makes sense.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have in this specific item. There are a number of cards that filled out and speak on all three items, so.
Mr. Kennedy, do you have another?
Complete.
Thank you.
Lloyd Kennedy, Burgess Terrace, getting this property here directly. But it's my property for the entire west side. Earlier you guys spoke, talked about, you know, trying to preserve the rural area and you were saying, you know, you won't get fined dwelling units per acre. I mean, that's probably right, but your statute still says you can't. That's the problem to me. You also have RR available to you. It is in your section 109 of your municipal. So if we want to talk about getting together, win-win-win, let the property owners, I, I, come on out, Eustis. You want your money? You want your annexation rights? That's fine. Property owners, you want to do that? That's fine. Let's work on a way that we can all kind of preserve the natural community we have. One dwelling unit per acre is still going to be very good. 162 acres, a whole, all three of them put together, that's still quite a bit of growth. I understand it might not be the same, but if we can sit here and say, well, it won't be five. Make it one, it can, that's what we're going to be, we're all going to be happy with that. I think there's a way, and I'll be happy to sit down with anybody, any owner, any, you know, engineering firm, you know, the city, whatever. I mean, I'm certainly volunteering my service to sit down and figure out how we can all make a win-win-win out of all this. I certainly think that it's possible. We're very frustrated right now because we all see that five. If it can't be done because of restrictions, then let's change to five. You guys are in charge of writing the freaking rules. You're letting this happen, which is fine. Let the annexation happen, but put stipulation on it. Heard you earlier say, if you tariff this piece of property, you can go back and fix it. So you're creating this as part of the, as you guys as a commission. Please think about what we're doing. We want to be good neighbors too. I mean, we're very frustrated right now and you hear that. I know you said some of the emails were nasty. Hopefully mine wasn't. I was trying to be very professional about it, but again, I understand that these owners, and I've, I've seen a few of them around, that they're trying to do what they think is right for them and they do have the right for their own property. But as he said right here, let's be good neighbors about it. Let's set us all up for success. We can feel happy with it and everybody else can too. Let's think about that. Again, I'm here for maybe it's my. Again, I'm here for maybe use my email, my phone number, I'll gladly hand it out.
I think if you have it on that form that you filled out, Mary now has it as part of our record, and as we move forward, you will promise.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Few short minutes. Obviously, it's a foregone conclusion, all three properties, so I'll just assume that at this point. The question I have is, speaking to the commissioners and the mayor, Vice Mayor, how many open positions do you currently have in your public safety agencies, law enforcement, fire department?
Zero in the fire department, three in the police.
What is their rate of pay rank, central Florida, three counties?
I'm sorry, say that again.
The rate of pay for those officers and fire officers?
The current starting salary for police officers that are enrolled in about forty-one thousand dollars a year.
What I suggest, while you have several different things that you can do, if you are truly serious about going and building a beautiful Eustis, and I agree with you a hundred percent, let's staff law enforcement and fire department and let's pay them, okay? You're going to demand a lot from them. You're adding property to those properties, and let's staff it, okay? That's all that I have to say. If you're going to do it, and it's a foregone conclusion you're going to do it, then staff those positions and pay them commiserate of what you're asking from them.
Thank you, sir. I saw what you were working on.
Again, Tammy, five-eight-zero-zero, Burgess Terrace. These two properties do board my entire property line on the south and west sides. You see that lovely little L? I'm smacking the center of that L. As I stated before, I do have several livestock. My kids and I, we ride our horses quite frequently, so this is a concern for the safety of my animals and the safety of my kids on those animals with this density change. You do have the rural design district within your bylaws. I suggest that you concern looking at that as a density for this rural transition area being on that farther east border of the W map. And these areas definitely have endangered species guaranteed because I see them myself, the gopher turtles, lots of Sherman fox squirrels, and the swallow-tailed kites are very heavily in this area. They come over and they drink out of my horses' water troughs. So just definitely want to consider the area and what type of impact that's going to be for us surrounding and consider that rural density.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am, very quickly, please.
So I have a question.
Your name, please.
My name is Cindy Buckner. My question for you is, how do you see this as growth? What is the change that you're seeing in regards to how it's not going to take away from what the city is trying to grow from?
I'm not really sure how to answer that.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure of the question. I'm sorry.
So my question is, in response to building all of these houses, would it not be taking away from the problem that we already have within the city?
I don't see what problem you're talking about. Sorry, Mayor. No, you're fine. What problem are you talking about? I'm not sure what you mean.
So you are all wanting change and growth, right? That's what you're saying in Eustis? So why aren't we doing something within the city then?
We are.
We are.
Oh, we are.
Instead of going to the rural and building there, is that not going to?
We need every first and third Thursday of the month, come in and see what's going on in Eustis. As I mentioned earlier, we bought those three properties. The commission owns it, and we're going to develop those properties. We have another development going on on Orange Avenue. You probably see as you drive by on forty-four. There's another one going on right on the lake. It should be starting hopefully in the next six months or so. And we have some on Pine Meadows. So yeah, it is, it is growing. The city is doing what it needs to do.
The owners came to us. We didn't go looking for them. They came to us.
I understand, although you do have the official say in regards to how the land is being used.
And when a development is brought to us, we will have something to say, but right now, we have nothing. All we have in front of us is the, is request for annexation and the request to change the land use regulations to bring them into our form of land use. Right now, we don't, I have not seen, and I think I can speak for every commissioner because I don't think our staff has seen any development plan for that property. Even in Mrs. Harper's written statement, she does not have anything right now going on with that. Mr. Brown?
This side of the property.
Mr. Brown, can you come up real quick? And I don't want to go back and forth because we'll be here all night if we do it, but Mr. Brown is in one of the property owners on the property we're talking about right now.
Yeah, I'm, my family's a fifty percent owner of the property, and we've been in value-added agriculture here since fifty-four. I've worked personally here for thirty-five years. My brother, who's the other fifty percent owner, is a resident. This piece of property, a third of it, we brought, we bought in the sixties. I've been in front of this commission before, working on industrial matters, but I've never dealt on residential, never developed anything residential in Eustis. This is the first time we've ever come in front of this commission. I kind of feel for you guys. I've been in agriculture. Our plan right now and reason for doing this is just mostly for state reasons. He has a family, I have a family, we have kids. We've not talked to any developers, not talked to any engineers, haven't done anything with any land planners, and we're just kind of trying to plan for our future. So that's just where we are. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Thank you, sir. Quickly, yes, sir.
With all due respect, I mean, it's our forty-five minute. Just want to.
No, no, you're fine.
So I'm Tyler Reinderson, three-five-four-one-zero, Marshall Road. Lived there for about twenty years or so. It's a beautiful area. I'm not against growth at all. I understand it's a necessary evil. It will happen. However, I'd just like it to be done responsibly. To see five, five homes per one acre would just be absolutely absurd. The roadways can't support it. I understand you're talking about forty-four being a four-lane. It's not now. I've almost been hit and head-on collisions numerous times there, the passing, the, just the overall traffic there is just, it's insane. I'd also like to say, these are my neighbors as well, Thomas Hickson, and they built so responsibly over there. And Pony Trail sat there for probably close to a decade, half-developed. They put in the cul-de-sac, they paved it, nothing was done. It was a dumping grounds. People would throw box springs, old furniture, anything you'd think of, used motor oil. It was just an absolute dump. They came in, they bought it. I can only imagine the amount of work that went into that. But the way that they did it and the amount of houses per acre was just, it fit the area very well. I'd like to see that done with any future development regarding any of those properties. That's all, just.
That's my time. Thank you. I appreciate you being here. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name's Jonathan Gillick. I also live at three-five-four-one-zero, Marshall Road. I moved in there about two years ago. I lived there only on the weekends because I worked down in Miami. I drive four hours down every Monday. I drive four hours back every Friday. I drove here early today to be here for this. I am in it all the time in the suburban areas. That is not what we need up here. I do agree with Tyler. Growth, necessary evil. Hundred percent agree. The area that we are in, five houses per acre, not needed. One house per acre, doable. Five houses, five acres per house, perfect. Like, that would be perfect. That would fit the area perfectly. As Tyler said, Thomas Hickson and his family came in, did their responsible thing, and I would just hate to see the way that area is right now be ruined. So with all due respect, you know, I agree. Growth is necessary, but it also is evil. You know, I walk out on my front porch, we are above the power lines. We reference the house as a hill. You know, it's not safe for roadways. It's not, you know, Thrill Hill. It's called Thrill Hill. You go down, you get a thrill. You know, it's not, you know, it's not just a regular flat road. It's dangerous. It is a very dangerous intersection. We have animals out there. You know, I'm worried about what happens. I want to raise my family there, and I'm just, I'm concerned. So again, one house per acre, perfect. Five houses, five acres per house, amazing. So, thank y'all.
Thank you for driving back for tonight. Anyone else?
Karen. Seeing then, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We're going to bring it back to the commission now. Commissioners before us, we have ordinance number twenty dash thirty-five. What's the will of our commission? Motion to approve? Thank you, sir.
Second.
All right, we'll give that to the Vice Mayor, first and a second. Any further discussion? Karen, did you have anything? I know you wanted to talk earlier.
No, I just, you know, I think people get stuck on that one to five, and they get stuck on the five, and we've already had that discussion. And again, when a development comes, if it ever comes, all of those studies have to be done. People have to put in tens of thousands of dollars to do all these studies to find out if they can even develop it. So don't get stuck on that. It's.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I'd just say if you want to find out, talk to Tim Green. Tim has been at us for a long time. He knows we don't let anything get by us. If we don't agree with what is going to mix, we just don't let it go. So he knows. He's had a hard time getting some things passed here, and we are pretty much thick list. We know we have that suburban residential, but we do also have some way in detailing what we want in that, in that kind of development, so. And the only other thing I could suggest is that, just about police protection, fire protection, I think it's great. I think we do have police and we are doing what we need to do to make sure they have a livable wage, and that's one of the things this commission has always been concerned with, and even our employees who are in public works, which would provide some service to there too. And we have some of the best. And what I'm amazed that even, and I know it sounds really hokey, but we have the best water in all of Lake County. It is excellent water, so anybody who gets that will get treated to, almost like spring water, so. So that was the only comment.
Thank you. Before we take this to a vote, I would like to ask Mary that every letter that was read into the record and every email that we received be placed also under five-point-four as well, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. All right. Commissioners, we have a first and a second. We've had discussion. If I don't hear any more discussion, we're going to call for a roll call. Mary?
I'd first ask who had the motion.
Motion I did.
That's what I thought. Bob and Emily.
And the Vice Mayor did the second.
Yes, that I got.
Okay.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Moran.
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty thirty-six, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan pursuant to one sixty-three-point-three-one-eight-seven Florida statutes, changing the future land use designation of approximately one hundred and four-point-zero-six-six acres of recently annexed real property located on the south side of County Road forty-four A and west of Thrill Hill Road from rural transition in Lake County to suburban residential SR in the city of Eustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance twenty thirty-six? Seeing then, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners before us, we have ordinance twenty dash thirty-six. What's the will of this commission? Motion to approve?
Second.
All right. First by Commissioner Moran, second by Vice Mayor Emily Lee. Any discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Moran.
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty thirty-seven, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the rural neighborhood design district designation to approximately one hundred and four-point-zero-six-six acres of recently annexed real property located on the south right, south side of County Road forty-four A and west of Thrill Hill Road. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance twenty thirty-seven? Seeing then, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners before us, we have ordinance twenty dash thirty-seven. What's the will of our commission?
Move to approve.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Moran.
Aye.
Commissioner Alibertie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye.
It's the first reading of ordinance twenty thirty-eight, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately thirty-nine-point-one-six-nine-one acres of real property located on the east side of Thrill Hill Road, north of Reedy Road. Ms. Barnes.
Lori Barnes, Development Services Director, presenting ordinance number twenty thirty-eight, twenty thirty-nine, and twenty forty, voluntary annexation request and future land use and design district assignment for property east of Thrill Hill Road, north of Reedy Road. Development Services received an application from Appian Engineering on behalf of the property owner, Mount Dora Groves Company, for voluntary annexation of thirty-nine-point-one-six-nine-one acres of property. The applicant has requested an assignment of a Eustis suburban residential design district designation and a Eustis rural neighborhood design district designation. This map shows the site in relationship to the city limits, the Lake County, Lake May Preserve, and properties discussed earlier tonight that will, that upon adoption of ordinance twenty thirty-two and ordinance twenty thirty-five would make the subject property contiguous. This is an aerial view of the subject properties, again, in relationship to the Eustis city limits, the Mount Dora city limits, and the suburban-style development in the eastern areas of the county out to four thirty-seven. The city's joint planning area boundary was established in nineteen thirty-seven. The properties subject to this voluntary annexation request lie just outside the city's joint planning area boundary. However, the properties still meet the statutory requirements for annexation. The city's joint planning area agreement with Lake County does not include any limitations on annexation outside of our joint planning area. It is not prohibited, and permission from the county is neither required. The Florida statutes require properties to be contiguous to the city limits for voluntary annexation. As I mentioned, upon adoption of the prior two ordinances, the site would be contiguous on the west side. The city did provide notice as required to Lake County, and the voluntary annexation advertisement was noticed in the daily commercial for two consecutive weeks. Annexation does begin to fill in the city's natural growth boundary. This application is a little bit different than the ones mentioned before, so I would like to mention to the commission that, yes, this is outside our joint planning area boundary, but Eustis is urban service area. The Eustis urbanized area extends far to the east, out to Sorento Springs, out to Redtail, out to Serenity at Redtail, where our eastern utility plant provides water and sewer to developments of suburban character. Staff evaluated the, the future land use request according to chapter one sixty-three of the Florida statutes, per the city's future land use element in the comprehensive plan and chapter one oh two of the land development regulations. Chapter one sixty-three includes indicators, twelve of them, that an amendment does not discourage the proliferation of sprawl, and by the way, sprawl is intended to be discouraged. Sprawl can be basically defined as low-density, single-use areas that are disconnected and So of the twelve indicators that show an amendment does not discourage sprawl, sprawl, the indicators don't apply to this amendment. Of the indicators that show an amendment discourage, discourages the proliferation of urban sprawl, there are eight indicators. A developed, a proposed amendment that achieves four is shown to discourage sprawl, and this amendment meets six of those indicators. Staff evaluated the request according to our future land. Staff evaluated the request according to our future land use element appendix. Although the property is outside of our joint planning area in our 180 district, utility lines are available within approximately a mile, mile and a half. We do have capacity to serve the project or the property. Natural resources and natural features currently, the property is an orange grove. The status of the orange grove is unknown at this time to myself, although Appian Engineering might be able to give some additional information. Regarding transportation, staff did review the potential transportation impact. And I wanted to mention, a couple of speakers indicated that staff's analysis of the transportation did not include Thrill Hill. It did not include Thrill Hill because we use published traffic counts from Lake County. There are traffic count stations mapped, and then those numbers tabulated, and it is available to the public. There is not, there was not a traffic count station on Thrill Hill between 44 and State Road 44 for us to measure against, which is why we use the analysis based on County Road 44, State Road 44, Orange Avenue at Britt Road, and 439 and 437. Again, if a development is proposed, a full traffic impact study prepared by a traffic engineer will be required, and at that time, Thrill Hill would be fully evaluated. Regarding natural resources and natural features, again, there do not appear to be any natural resources in need of protection on the property. Regardless that it is currently an orange grove, the requisite environmental studies would still be required if a development is proposed. Regarding the Comprehensive Plan review, this, the Lake County future land use designations assigned in the Eustis joint planning area, as I mentioned previously on the other items, don't really provide for a rational transition. These designations provide for one unit to five acres, not taking into consideration the municipal's growth boundary, municipal densities needed to support water and sewer, our utility district. Now, the rural transition does permit, with 50% open space, one unit to one acre. The county plan used to allow a fourth alternative that would allow three units to an acre. However, the county eliminated that. And with the assigned future land uses, the elimination of the fourth option that provided an opportunity for three units an acre, and rural assignments, and rural transition assignments where suburban-type development was approved well east of a city's joint planning area, create a situation where there really isn't a rational transition from a city's urban area, the suburban area, and then the true connected rural agricultural areas of the county. The pattern's been interrupted. So the city's future land use map, again, shows that suburban residential designations apply to the majority of residential development within the city limits. This property has requested voluntary annexation, as indicated in the staff report. There are urban densities, as suburban densities, a mile away at the lakes of Mount Dora. So when a suburban residential designation is requested on a property, and the Eustis suburban residential land use designation exists to the west and the southwest, and further to the southwest along Orange Avenue, within a mile of the subject property, and the city's urban growth boundary really extends all the way east to 437, suburban residential does seem to be consistent with our Comprehensive Plan and creates a situation where a transition may be provided for in the future. Staff finds that the requested designation is consistent with the surrounding Eustis future land use designations in the Comprehensive Plan. Again, suburban residential is more intense than Lake County's designation, but that's expected when you're changing from unincorporated to a municipality. And one more thing I wanted to mention, the properties, and this is outlined in the staff report, the properties in this area are located in a high groundwater recharge area. Those are areas which should be provided with central sewer service. Septic systems in high groundwater recharge areas, although septic systems have gotten better, could leak in in a high groundwater recharge area, providing the central sewer protects that natural resource. It protects the groundwater. Okay, finally, the design district designation requested is rural neighborhood. It is consistent and compatible. It meets the Development Transact, both for the properties that are existing in the city limits, and the TAN is where you see the rural neighborhood. Now, further to the southwest, you see the suburban neighborhood. The suburban neighborhood designation doesn't have so many limitations on development. For example, rural neighborhood does encourage clustered residential development and substantive open space, and does require additional buffers to preserve the rural view shed. All of these factors with a suburban residential future land use coupled with a rural neighborhood design district will help to provide for compatibility if a future development comes forward. Staff did notice 74 property owners in the surrounding area. We provided the advertisement and the newspaper and the daily commercial, and the site was I would ask the city clerk to incorporate the second to last slide from the two prior presentations that identified the 35 contacts, development services received regarding these applications, the 23 in opposition, the seven within the 500-foot, and the 13 outside the 500-foot, as well as the one in support. Finally, staff does recommend approval. The requested annexation is consistent with the Florida statutory requirements for voluntary annexation. Annexation would provide for new property in the Eustis urbanized area and provide additional ad valorem tax revenue to the city. Staff does find the proposed designations consistent with the Eustis Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Regulations, and I am available for any questions if you have them, as well as Major Stacy from Appian Engineering.
Are there any questions? Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2038?
I have a question, Catherine Gray.
We've got a gentleman already coming up. Let me go ahead and get him, since he's already, if that's okay with you. Thank you, ma'am.
My name is John Ardito. I'm at 35730 Thrill Hill Road, and I'm within the 500-foot of this development or this proposal. I know we've talked about that there's no plan in advance. I own a mortgage company in Tavares. I've been here for about 17 years. To think that nothing's being thought of, I think we all know what's going to be thought of. I know that you said that there would used to be a three-acre plan. It's pretty good. If you think about this right now, if you do three houses on that development, it's 203 homes. Thrill Hill Road cannot take that kind of traffic. You also don't have a study of what Thrill Hill Road has had for traffic. Since the cut-through for Thrill Hill or 437 are the only two ways to get from 44 north to 44 south. That's it. The traffic that goes by my house every day, like you were saying with speeding, which drives down that street, there's no way they can handle that route. We need to really take into account what five versus one. I understand we're getting hung up on this, but what does it really mean? You're talking about if you go to three houses an acre, 203 homes in that small area. Now, look, I make my money from houses being sold. I make my money. This isn't the way to do it. Annexation, I'm not against it. One per acre is the only way this should get done. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry.
My husband's in the audience there, Room Rank Gray. We own the land that completely touches both the north and west sides of Thrill Hill parcel. I'm going to start by saying we are totally against this annexation and rezoning of Thrill Hill parcel, which is currently zoned RR, which allows for one dwelling per five acres. We've heard this, to the proposed SR zoning of, you know, five dwellings to one acre. We know that there's this contest between Mount Dora and Eustis going on, but we also know that this will not stop with these proposed properties. We merely know that we're a stepping stone towards a much larger annexation that is going to go all the way to Sorento, and I hope everybody knows that. Just think that the next generation may not know what open land looks like, and it saddens all of us that the wildlife and plant life that are protected will lose in the end. We have, because I went out personally and documented every one of them, by size, by active, inactive, everything. I've got 25 active gopher tortoise holes on my property by itself. We also, as you've already heard, have Sherman fox squirrels that are on the property that touches from the south of this property, who also come to my house because they love the longleaf pine seeds. That's their favorite. And so they come up to our property. We've got everything else that you can imagine that comes out on our property, and that's the way we like it. In your regards to the claim of being contiguous, if we look into the legislative history notes as to whether the legislator intended to treat a passive conservation area, this was back in the, on that first one, it really, I'm going to cut that one out because I just realized it's already been annexed, so not a problem. We stand together against this annexation and rezoning of these parcels. Forty-one years ago, my husband and I moved up from the city of Miami, where we spent almost 25 years of our lives fighting traffic everywhere, overcrowding, houses built one next right to the other. We decided to move to the quiet Lake County, Eustis to be exact. We bought our little piece of paradise, raised two daughters, six grandkids, and now three great-grandkids that are also on that property, who love to come over to see us. Grandma and Grandpa, they ride their ATVs, they sail down a zip line that we got out there for them. We love our grandbabies, pine trees, et cetera. They were brought up around this country lifestyle, and we don't want that to change. Don't let money or decisions of putting in, you know, all these houses. Right now, we've got 10 acres, and we are zoned one per five acres. Like everybody has said, if we're going to have to go with one to one, that's fine. We're not going to be able to do anything probably better than that. I hate to say it, but we really didn't expect to come in here and know that you guys had already made up your own minds. So we know that we've already lost to a part of this.
Ms. Gray, if you'll go ahead and wrap up, please.
Yes, this is, you know, this is our lives, and we know, we love coming in from out there in the county to the city. We come to all the things that you guys do here, but we like it being here. We don't want the city to be out there. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other members of the public like to speak on ordinance number 2038?
We'll give it one more shot, right? I'm going to agree. I mean, I guess, I'm going to go back to what Mr. Mayor said earlier about playing nice with Lake County on the first.
Give him your name.
Lloyd Kennedy, Burgess Terrace. I don't know that you guys reached out to Lake County about going outside of JPA. I'm sure in the UK you can go outside of JPA, but that doesn't seem like playing nice in a sandbox. It seems like begging for forgiveness instead of asking for permission. So I'm very interested to see how you guys vote on this one, because you're going outside of JPA, and what your thought is on that, because the plan in front of you did not follow that, so that's why I kind of stayed around for this one, because this one's very unique. The second thing is that I urge anybody to get familiar with the County of, Volusia County and City of Deltona case, where they did a very similar situation like this, where they used three different property owners, trying to parcel them separately, but given that we talked about 74 owners every time, there's not 74 owners on that first person, we have looped them together. You guys have put them together. It makes the fight against it much easier for all of us, because there's precedents out there, where they used a one property had contiguous, and the rest of them didn't, and it was down to 1%. We have 4.3%. I've already done the math. Very low percentage. I think we got a good case against it. Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Sherri Fort, and I live at 20931 Reedy Road. We live out there, we have 15 acres out there. We went out there, what, probably 30 years ago, to get away from the city, raise our children, let them watch cattle being born and chickens hatch, and, you know, all the fun things that we got to do. We'd like to be able to do that with our grandchildren as well. I'm seeing a bigger picture here that scares me. A year ago, I think it was like a year ago, Lynasaur tried to put a migrant camp in our backyard. 200 people, 200 immigrants in our backyard, and rumor had it that they were going to have a pot mill back there. And that, to me, is scary. And annexing this piece of property, and I think it butts theirs, makes me feel like this is a stepping stone for them to be able, because the state's shutting down because of the Wakita River issues, because of their sewage. So it just, it concerns me that this is a stepping stone for them. And that's pretty much all I've got to say. Thanks.
Good evening again, Thomas Hickson. I, our property access, the ingress and egress on the pony trail court aligns directly with this particular parcel. For anyone that's been out there, it's about a quarter mile to a half mile stretch where the elevation of the road, it goes up and it goes down. I can't even conceive how we would have access, how anyone would be able to access that property the way the road pitches are out there at this point, whether it's one acre, one home per acre, or even five homes per acre. It's almost impossible for us to turn off a pony trail court or the construction crews that are building our homes to do it safely. So being that the staff members stated that there was no specific study done on Thrill Hill Road, I just want to be on the record that that's done, because you have everything from skateboarders to cyclists, to motorcyclists. Now, there's tractor trailers now cutting through there at full speed. So that is a very dangerous section, probably, other than the deep slope, it's probably the second most dangerous portion of that particular road. Thank you.
Would any other members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2038? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners before us, we have ordinance number 20-38. What's the will of our commission? Motion to approve? Give that to Commissioner Moran. Commissioner Alberthi, you want to do the second?
Second.
Perfect. Before we go to vote on this, Mary, I am going to ask again that you will attach all the red emails in and the 163. the red emails in and the ones that we've received to this as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberdi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
This is the first reading of ordinance 2039, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis comprehensive plan pursuant to 163.3187 Florida statutes, changing the future land use designation of approximately 39.1691 acres of recently annexed real property located on the east side of Thrill Hill Road, north of Reedy Road, from rural in Lake County to suburban residential SR in the city of Eustis. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance 2039? Seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, we have before us ordinance 20-39. What's the will of our commission?
Move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberdi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Ordinance 2040, this is the first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, assigning the rural neighborhood design district designation to approximately 39.1691 acres of recently annexed real property located on the east side of Thrill Hill Road, north of Reedy Road. Would any members of the public like to speak on ordinance number 2040? Seeing none, we will close the public portion of the hearing.
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance 20-40. What's the will of our commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of ordinance number 2040 on its first reading.
Thank you, ma'am.
Second.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Alberdi?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Next, we have other business, city manager, annual evaluation. Director of HR, Mr. Howe.
Good evening, Bill Howe, Director of Human Resources. Annually, the City Commission is required to review the performance of the city manager, and in conjunction with the city manager's contract, his salary may be increased from time to time based on majority vote of the commission. As a point of information, you've already approved a 2% pay raise for general employees to take effect this fiscal year. Each commissioner's already completed a performance review of the city manager. It's recommended you discuss those reviews at this time with the city manager and determine if any goals or objection, objectives should be, should be revised for the upcoming fiscal year. I'd be happy to answer any questions before you begin.
Thank you for providing them. Commissioner Moore, would you like to start? If, you know, if it's anything you want to say, that's fine. If not, that's fine, too.
About the evaluation?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't dreaming, I was looking at something. Ron and I have been together for four and a half, almost four and a half years, and I, we've had some rough times, especially, I keep referring those two years, that road commissioner, and that was a tough time for all of us, Derek the same way, and I was kind of harsh on our city manager, and, but we always agreed that it was a good idea to be able to know what we wanted and be able to provide direction to our city manager. Two years ago, we met at our strategic plan, I think we had that same discussion, and both of us having had so many years of experience in this bureaucracy, we understand it, so I've always appreciated his role, I knew he had to report to five of us, and I always was supportive of just providing, the commission provided direction. And those first two years were really tough. I'll tell you, he's, from my perspective, he's done a great job in the last year and a half, two years. I think sometimes because of our commission also, and your leadership, Mayor, we have gotten so far that I didn't expect it would happen so quickly. I am just thrilled to, to, to give you a performance evaluation, I had no recommendations. I'm just really thrilled to be here today and be able to have a successful goodbye, for me at least, in December, knowing that we accomplished a lot. So thank you very much, Ron.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Alberdi?
I wrote what I wrote in there, and I've enjoyed working with Ron, because this is my swan song, too, I guess. Just, the only one was communication, better communication, and actually, if, if you have to meet with each of us individually to accomplish some things, it should be all of us individually. Sometimes I felt kind of left out in certain situations, so I, most of it was just the communication with the, the lower marks. I do have to say I did write on mine that I believe your pay is in line with the other city managers, looked at population and things like that, and I did not recommend a raise or a bonus this year because we're in also a bad state, so I, I did put that on there.
Commissioner LaHoop Smith?
I'm so tired.
It's all right.
And I hate that we're doing this at this time, but I, I understand we need to get it done. I just, I think we need to support our city manager. I think we have had a tumultuous, to say that at 9:30 at night for me is pretty darn good, but it's been a, quite a ride with our county commission, but our city manager needs to know we have his back when it all comes down to it, and I know he has our back, and his job is to be a force for the city of Eustis, which I do believe he has done. Oh goodness, what else do I want to say? You know, we do not want a city manager who is going to be the one that we lost the hospital, Taveries is coming up, Lakeshore Drive, what used to be Eustis is no more, Mount Dora crossed 441 and has gone all the way to 44, like I said, and no, it's not a race, we're not in a race with Mount Dora, but at the same time, we should be treated equally, and I believe that is what Mr. Nybert is fighting for, is for all of us to be treated equally. I've been so proud of this commission so far. It's been a pleasure to work with all of you. We have always been able to disagree and still agree at the end of the day when it's all over with, and I know Mr. Nybert has been so frustrated with me sometimes that he's, but I know he has my back, I know he's working for Eustis. I believe he at least deserves the 2%, and let's keep it equal for everyone. I don't want our pay scale for the city manager to fall so far behind that we're going to have to play havoc to ever catch it up, so I'd like to keep that in our mind, and yes, I am a glass full kind of person, so I did give high marks, and I am going to be better at calling Mr. Nybert and getting appointments with him because that's been on me, so, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Vice Mayor?
Yes, perhaps my evaluation was perhaps more intense than the others. However, Ron and I have spoken, and what I liked about it is that he took it to heart, and he began to move towards improving what needed to be done and addressing my concerns and some of the concerns of the other commissioners, and I applaud him for that. I just want to make Ron better because I feel like we have a lot to do in Eustis. We have a future that we have to look to and start moving towards, and so the stronger he is, the stronger we are, the stronger we are, the stronger he is. So I, I do appreciate the fact that you took it to heart, and as I said to him, he took the bull by the horns and began to try to strengthen the areas in which I had concerned and others had concerns about. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ron, it's been a pleasure working with you, and hope to be able to do that for some time to come. You've known since, you've worked with me since you've started here, I grade hard. I'm a, with the corporations that I work for, you're taught to grade hard. The areas of my concern, you have addressed, you have made some corrections already this week in some areas that, that I have been frustrated with within our city for some time, and I appreciate that. Shows me the willingness for you to work and to get things done when we ask you to. Because I had never come right out and asked for any of those things to be done, I've kind of just left it to you, which I never want to be a city commissioner that micromanages the day-to-day operations of the city. In our form of government, that's not our job, that is yours, that's what we pay you to do. So I, I don't ever want that to happen. So Karen and I have sat here, we have hired two city managers in our time here, I don't ever want to go through it again. I hope I'm long gone before we have to go through that process. I'll tell you, I kept the book that we were all given when we hired you, and you could flip back through and you can look at what everybody brought to the table. You brought more to the table, and you still do today, than any of those people, because I Googled every one of those people that we looked at. You have been far more successful than any of those people, so I thank you, okay? I, I, I've said when it comes to pay raises, I never want to do for one more than I'm going to do for another. I would stay right with the, what we're doing for everybody on staff, I think that's only fair. I'm kind of like Karen when it comes to, we sat here and we went through the 2008 to a time through 2013 or 14 where we could not get pay raises at all. We're paying a steep price for that today in our police department and in some of our other areas, and I do not want us to fall into that trap now. I do know that there are some things we've got to do next year to find money for public safety, we're going to have to increase public safety, and that's a dedication that we're going to have to come up with as a city commission of where to find that money and where to find the good people to put on our streets. So that's my review, we've discussed everything, so that's it. Into this commission, we might disagree a lot sitting up here, but it has definitely been a pleasure, because at the end of the day, when the vote's taken, we hug each other, we go home, and we move forward to the next battle that we have to fight, and at the end of the day, as long as the people of the city of Eustis win, I'm okay with that. I'll be on the losing end every time, as long as the people of this city win. So thank you so much.
Mayor, I want to say one more thing.
Yes.
I, I think we should treat the, Ron, like we do everybody else, and they should, if they get 2%, he gets 2% also, and, and I want to thank you guys, because I'm the newbie, and sometimes I'm a little wacky out there, but y'all have all tolerated me, but you know what, you got me for four more years, look out.
And I have one more, too. You know, I'm going to differ from what was vice mayor at one time last year, and you said to me, why would you not want to get his pay at the same level as the others? And I'll always remember that, Karen, and so I don't mind the 2%, but I think we need to look at pay equity, so it doesn't appear as though it's an actual performance, it's a bonus, but I think we need to bring it to a level that's comparable to the others, too. I don't want to be the last or the least. You said that last year, and I always thought about that, what a great idea, and this is a year that we can do that. So I'm not sure how we do that, Bill, but I know it's normally equity is within our system, but I don't want to have the lowest paid city manager. I think our city's growing, people need to know that, and maybe a discussion for you in the next year, but I don't think I would tie it so much to evaluation as much as having some sort of pay equity that shows that we're a growing city, we're moving ahead, and he has the same respect. People do look at salaries, and all of them understand that we are paying our city manager at least as close to as we can to what others are getting here, so it's important to me, at least, to make sure.
Bye-bye, with love. Love to agree with you on that one. I just don't think, I don't think this is the time that we can do that, and, and what I'm looking at, as I'm looking, we've sat in private negotiations with the police department. We also don't know truthfully what COVID has done to us as a city yet. We're sitting right here with the coffers from this year's money that came in on taxes. We don't know what February and March are going to bring to us when the new property taxes are coming in. We don't know if people are going to pay those taxes, and yet, the county will sell them at the, on the doorstep, the steps of the courthouse, however, how long will it take us to get money back in the coffers? We've already seen as a city what our penny sales tax has done, and we've already taken a hit there, and I think there's more hits to come still, so I respect, I respect, no, I respect that, and I do not want to be, I'm tired of being last at everything we do, you know? So that is something I would like to have in consideration, and maybe, you know, maybe as we go through the year, if things brighten up, maybe we can look at adjusting that, I'm all for that. I think that we're going to end up having truthfully to do a full budget review, probably in February, to make sure that we have the money to go to the end of the year. So I think during that review period is where we maybe need to look at that as well. So I, I, I understand where you're at, and I'm not totally disagreeing with you, but I just don't think we've got it to do right now. Okay. Mr. Nybert, would you like to respond to any of that?
I appreciate comments, I appreciate comments. As I've said before, don't wait a year to come banging on and grabbing me by the scruff of the neck, and if you're not comfortable with something going on, come on in, call me up and say, Ron, what the heck are you doing? What the heck are you not doing? We see each other at a minimum of twice a month, the dialogue, the interaction between us, you're my eyes and ears, I'm the community, talking to the constituents day-to-day. You guys set goals, you set dreams, set objectives for this community, my job is to give you advice and carry out. We have some hard decisions coming up over the next year in terms of trying to address some of those great positions in the community and achieve some of those goals, and I'm glad to be here. As I've said before, when I first came down here, I wasn't just looking for a job, for a home, not on that hope, my intent is to be here as long as this body wants me to be, or I feel that I'm doing the job that this community deserves. Thank you for your input.
Thank you, sir. Coming down now to future agenda items. Karen, anything for a future? Your mind's gone.
She's already checked out.
No, I have, okay, future agenda items, no, I don't have any.
You've got, you need, you need us to vote on that, on the 2%?
I'm voting for it.
All right, you need a motion or just a majority? We're good, we have a majority. Karen, you're for the 2%?
Yes.
Emily?
Okay.
No, 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 no.
I always have to be the one.
No, if you don't want to be, it's okay.
We'll talk about you later.
I know, I know, it's okay. I'll just give you something else to talk about. How's that?
So you're a yes or no?
No.
No, and you're a yes, and I'm a yes, so four to one, okay? That good, Bill?
It's okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so Karen, future agenda item?
Thank you.
Madam Vice Mayor? Mr. Alberdi?
Go home and eat.
Go home and eat, me, too. Bob, nothing, okay?
When's our next meeting? Because we're not going to do the second.
It starts in an hour.
Yeah, the second meeting doesn't start for, for the annexation until December?
This week, the three, my, I, tonight will be out until December 3rd agenda.
Okay. Okay, all right, coming to commission reports, anything to report, Bob?
No, it's, still pooping on my sidewalk, but, no, 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 I'm fine.
Or anything to report?
The, oh, Lake Community Action Agency did not have a meeting this month.
Okay.
So next month is on the agenda.
Did they just cancel it, or was there no quorum?
No, they just canceled it.
Okay.
We've had a quorum.
Okay, good.
We have, everybody's been on the phone during the meetings, so.
Okay, good. Nothing else?
Can I mention, I shouldn't have said that, there are a couple of things I have done. One of the things is to, actually, I resigned from the Homeless Coalition, so MidFlorida Homeless Coalition and the, what's called the Continuum of Care, I was the governing, president of the governing board, I also resigned from that, so there's, that's going to be open for somebody from the city, League of Cities, and all of us, the MPO didn't meet this month, but we'll meet the next month, so, sorry.
Karen, did I come to you yet?
I think so, but I don't, I don't think I have any.
Madam Vice Mayor, anything?
Yes, and of course, you'll probably speak to it also, but we did attend the football game.
We did.
It was just hot.
It wasn't pretty, but we attended.
Unfortunately, it was not good to score, but there's still time, and they'll make it, but I did enjoy it, I had not been to a football game since probably 1980, so it was nice. was nice to be outside and enjoy it, and, and didn't enjoy the outcome, but I enjoyed the process, the whole deal.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Attorney?
No.
Mr. Nybert?
I have one brief item. As you recall, we entered into an agreement to sell the spray build properties to Sun Care Properties. In the agreement was a 60-day due diligence period. They've asked for a 30-day extension on that. So if I could have consensus to allow me to execute a 30-day extension addendum to that contract.
Karen?
That's fine.
Why?
They need, they have time, we have time to do some additional due diligence.
Vice Mayor, next. Commissioner Alberthi, you okay with extending?
Yes.
Yeah, fine. I'm okay with it. All right.
Okay.
Got that. Anything else?
No, sir.
All right. Just a couple of quick things. Deepest sympathy to John Roberts. His wife, Molly, passed away. John's been a longtime businessman here in Eustis. So love, thoughts, and prayers go out to, to that family as they go through the loss. I think her services will be Saturday, I do believe, at Harden Pauli Funeral Home. So I'm going to try to attend that. So another one, this one's really kind of special. So Commissioner Moore's mom's birthday is today.
I'm here, not there. I should be.
She turns 96 years old today. So on behalf of the city...
Happy birthday, Bob.
Yes, so, yeah. So on behalf of the Eustis City Commission, Ms. Amanda, happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And hope you have many, many more.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Folks, thank you for being here tonight. I know it's not been an easy night. I know some of you have heard things you did not want to hear from us. Please know that you have my commitment, and I believe I know the hearts of this commission, that we will work with you as things change. So that's, that's, that's it for this evening. We're adjourned.